We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, February 16, 2023. Our invocation will be done by Pastor Joshua Nelson of the New Jerusalem Seven Day Adventist Praise and Worship Center. After that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you. Glad you made that correction, is Worship Center. I appreciate that, yes. Let us bow our heads for prayer. Father in heaven, God, we are thankful to be in your presence. As we have come together here tonight, we give you glory and honor to your name. And we pray, God, over each elected official, our leadership, our mayor, that you will bless them with wisdom and courage this evening. We pray that you would lead this, our great city and county. And we also ask for forgiveness in areas that we have tried to lead without you. For you did say that nothing can succeed unless we place our plans in your hands. So lead, God. Send your spirit into this place in a mighty way and direct us so that we may be the city that you want us to be. We thank you, we love you, and in the matchless name of Jesus, we pray. Amen and amen.
(Inhales) I bow to the heavens, to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Nelson, we appreciate you coming and offering up the invocation. And it's a workshop for the worship in the center of God, you know. So thank you so much for that. We do have announcements and presentations tonight. We have a presentation by myself to the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Executive Director, Ms. Chan Weeks, a proclamation recognizing February, February, Friday, February 17, 2023, as Arbor Day 2023, 2023, in the city of Douglasville. And I will read the proclamation. Ms. Weeks, we just saw each other at the Skin Tree Chestnut Tree thing. So you're getting all over the place. But I will read the proclamation and then we'll have you come forward and then you can have a few words if you like, and then we'll take a photo. And I'd like to congratulate you also. I don't know if you heard about the Keep Douglasville Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, Keep Georgia Beautiful. Have you gotten that letter? Isn't that exciting? Yes, and so we'll have you talk about that if you'd like to as well. But it says, "Officer of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our county. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville and the Douglasville City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 17, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Douglasville. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I further encourage all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this future and the future generations to come. So proclaim the 16th day of February 2023." Please come forward, Ms. Chan Weeks, our executive director of Keep Douglasville Beautiful, and talk to us about trees. I know we planted, how many years ago, those trees at Douglas County High School?
Planted 63 trees, and that was in 2021.
2021?
2020.
They look fabulous. It's just three years later, and those trees are really blooming. So go ahead and talk to us about Arbor Day.
So Arbor Day in the state of Georgia is tomorrow. It's always the third Friday of February, so we are happy to be celebrating that. We will have an event tomorrow at Hunter Park. Parks Department is hosting. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for helping coordinate that, but it will be at 2 o'clock at the baseball fields back there in the back at Hunter Park. So we'd love for everybody to come. We are going to be looking at 13 trees that we planted just a few weeks ago as part of a shade plan for the park. As you know, if you go and watch a baseball game, you end up sitting, there's usually tournaments, and you end up being out there all day long in the hot sun. So we want to provide some shade for, you know, the patrons and the fans that come and the teams that are playing. And what better way to do that than plant some trees? So we hope that you all can join us tomorrow at 2 o'clock and help us celebrate Arbor Day.
So that's very exciting. We look forward to coming tomorrow to celebrate Arbor Day with you. And that's going to be a blessing for Hunter Park. My son used to play baseball, and it was hot, hot out there. So we're excited about that. Can you tell us, tell the audience, so the viewing audience, about the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Award that we received from the state of Georgia and the Keep America Beautiful Foundation?
So I believe the one you're referring to is our one from Keep Georgia Beautiful that we recently received, our President Circle Award, I believe?
Was it President Circle Award, City Manager? It had Keep America and Keep Georgia Beautiful.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So we were happy to receive that. That is something that we strive for every year to get, and we have not missed a year yet. So by doing the beautification projects and litter abatement and the, you know, the tree projects, everything that we do that helps to get us that status each year and get the award of being in the president's circle.
I know, that was great. And that first line said, "We cleaned 553 streets," council members, that those volunteers we gave proclamations to a couple of weeks ago cleaned up 553 streets in the city of Douglasville. That's great.
And we can always use more volunteers and public more streets, so.
And we don't know how many trees we planted.
How many trees over last year?
Yes, ma'am. It's okay, it's okay. But anyway, anyone who have anything to say before we come around to Ms. Weeks and give her this proclamation? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm just looking forward to, once we establish a new city park in Ward One, that we'll have Arbor Day festivities in Arbor Station.
Arbor Station, Arbor, that's, ba-bum-bum. Okay, let's go around and have a picture with Ms. Weeks and give her a hand, as she's done great work in Keep Douglasville Beautiful.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we also have a proclamation for myself to, for the Mayor's Reading Club Program offered by Georgia City Solutions, promoting partnership and collaboration between the city, counties, and county schools, libraries, local nonprofits, and the business community to improve the literacy skills and overall success, which early reading among children and youth in Georgia cities throughout encouragement, support, leadership for the city mayors. And so I'll read this, this to celebrate the Mayor's Reading Club, which we are a part of. It says, "Whereas literacy is not just an education, educational issue, it is economic workforce and quality of life issues. And whereas research shows that children who can't read proficiently by the end of the third grade are more likely to experience poor health, have discipline problems, and drop out of high school. And whereas each year in the United States, low literacy levels are linked to hundreds of billions of dollars in nonproductivity, healthcare, and judicial cost. And whereas 74% of Georgia 4th graders do not read proficiently. And collaboratively, collaborative efforts and strategies and strategic partnerships must be undertaken to address literacy issues in the state of Georgia. Whereas the Mayor's Reading Club Program is offered through Georgia City Solutions, a Georgia Municipal Association nonprofit, and whereas the goal of the program is to improve literacy skills and overall success with early reading among children and youth in Georgia cities through encouragement, support, and leadership from the city mayors. And whereas the Mayor's Reading Club is flexible and can be delivered in person or virtually and promotes partnership and collaboration between the city, county schools, public libraries, local nonprofits, and business communities. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and the citizens of the city, do hereby join the Mayor's Reading Club Program and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to help promote and alleviate literacy as a community priority and support the Mayor's Reading Club to improve Georgia's economic vitality, one book at a time." That's a whole lot of talking. So proclaim the 16th day of February 2023. And who do I give this to? City Manager? Our Communications? Ms. Emily? Since you have Douglasville Junior, and she helps me when I go to the schools and read to the kiddies, you want to talk anything about? I know I put you on the spot, Ms. Emily. If you want to talk and say anything, her or Ms. Jackson, about our reading programs. I know I'm supposed to go to the library to read in this Douglas, I mean, the Mayor's Reading Club, and go to the Douglasville Library on Selman Drive at storytime and read to the kids there.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So this is a program that's through an arm of GMA. And so, yeah, so it's just an opportunity for you to partner with libraries or the public school system and go in to take part in some of their reading programs that they have, the Douglas County Library. They have a preschool storytime that the mayor will be reading at in the near future, and maybe going to some schools, or maybe do a video of the mayor reading. And so it's just to help promote literacy in the city of Douglasville.
Yes, ma'am. And we have to tell the viewing audience or whomever about our little libraries that we have all over the city.
Yes, ma'am. So we have, I believe we have one at Hunter Park. And then we also have one out here on O'Neill Plaza that's kind of in the Little Breezeway. And I think there's also, is there also?
Jesse Davis. And Jesse Davis Park.
And Jesse Davis. And so these are just little lending libraries that are in the community for people to go and be able to get some books and encourage reading.
Yes, ma'am. So you can pick up a book or leave a book in those little mini libraries all over the city. So thank you so much. You wanted, I know you're the picture taker. What do you want to do?
Chelsea.
Ms. Chelsea's going to take it for you?
Chelsea can take a picture.
Okay. If you all don't mind coming around, please, and take this picture with Ms. Emily. One, two, three. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for those proclamations and presentations. Now we will do the protocol for the meeting, and then we'll jump right into the agenda that is printed outside, or you can follow us along on the screen. I'd like to welcome you to this Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a city council work session where business will not be conducted tonight. We'll gather information, and we'll have this information at this work session to help us make our decisions on our council meeting next week. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll just go briefly, briefly go over some protocol issues, and if you have any questions, you can raise those at this, after that. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting. If the comments and presentations that you're dealing with are important for this governing body to make our decisions, we will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of an attack and on any individual or group of individuals. Only one person speaking at a time. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, and address all of your concerns and comments to the chairperson. So the committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or representative of that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members were possibly asked clarifying questions to help us make our decision next week. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. Now, there is a timeframe for that. We have 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes. If you have a lot of people, then you can split up your time, three minutes or so. But in totality, you have 20 minutes for and 20 minutes in opposition. Each person has one opportunity to speak on the agenda item. And prior to coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card and hand that speaker card to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace James. And once you get to the podium, again, give your name and address. This is not a question and answer format or debate. We're really here just to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions next week. If you have anything that's printed or that you would like to give us copies of, please hand that to our Assistant City Clerk. She will make copies and disseminate that information to us so that it'll help us make our decisions next week. So hopefully, you've gotten all the information and protocol, and we know how the meeting is going to go now, and there are printed copies outside on the desk, and/or you can follow us on the screen with our agenda. So we'll jump right into the agenda now. So the first committee is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. We do have one item under the Economic Development Committee tonight.
Yes, sir.
And that is to adopt a resolution to authorize the termination of bond documents and to execute taxable industrial development revenue bond, JHOGA-1 Investment LLC Project, Series 2020, termination of bond documents, and payment of annual administration fee. Chris Pumphrey's going to explain to us why this is not an ordinary issue.
Okay.
Sir, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm glad to be in front of you this evening, but not the greatest news to be in front of you with. Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street. What this, in essence, is saying is, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had a festive announcement with Bang Energy, who had chosen Douglasville and selected 7705 Staples Drive for, I think it has a couple of addresses, a one-on-one curigway, that they had chosen that facility to manufacture their energy drink and all the canning is going to create 600 jobs, paying $25 an hour. Fast forward a couple of years, they filed for bankruptcy and have chosen to cancel this project. They are not out of business, but they are not moving forward on this project. So I think the most that they had done is hired a handful of people and had moved in a lot of their beverages and some equipment, but they are canceling, they have canceled that, that project. And so in order to administer a property tax incentive plan, it has to go through a bond-for-title process. And that's, in essence, what we have before you today, is the termination of that, of that bond on the, on the property. The property technically went into the bond program spring of '21, which makes it technically 2022 was the first year that they would have been on a property tax incentive plan. So in that year that they went on the plan was the year that they also canceled the project. And so it's just been a number of months of trying to work with them to unwind this. And so we are finally unwinding, unwinding that project. They are obligated to pay all of the taxes, so they do have a tax bill that the Tax Commissioner is very aware of, that they have to pay for 2022. They paid their 2021 taxes, but they have to pay their 2022 taxes. And so in order to ensure that, we do not further the incentive plan, we need to terminate it. And so the City of Douglasville Development Authority voted on Tuesday to terminate that plan, terminate the bond, and all of the agreements that are in place, and we are bringing that before you all this evening for your termination of that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. My understanding is that there was, one of the big issues alleged was that was that their distribution deal with PepsiCo fell through, is that not right?
Yeah, there's a huge issue with PepsiCo. I think there's some lawsuits and things flowing around with that.
Yeah, I didn't want to mention those, but always be careful when lawsuits are mentioned. Does Council or Mayor have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to question Mr. Pumphrey. Chris, what, is there any liability on behalf of the city other than we have just, we've lost, we've lost revenue or the county has lost revenue for that year, but it, because we had given them a tax incentive deal? And now that we've canceled that, they will be obligated, I'm assuming through the bankruptcy court, to pay the property taxes that would have been due?
Yeah.
Is that basically it?
Yeah, no liabilities there. They were still scheduled to pay taxes on, on that asset, but they actually, for a few reasons, they actually have a full year's tax bill for 2022 that they have to pay.
So there's no, no negative ramifications as far as the city's concerned?
No revenue.
Other than that, we've lost, we've lost that business?
Yeah, lost that business for the future.
I understand.
We are actively working with another business right now, who is looking at that building, and part of their due diligence in the, in focusing on that is the unwinding of this bond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Any additional questions or comments? Saying none, if there's no objection, I'd like to put this item on the consent agenda for Monday. Okay, so done. Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Economic Development Committee tonight. Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you again, Mr. Pumphrey, the CEO of Elevate Douglas and Development Authority. We'll move on then to Finance Committee, that's chaired by Council Member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Council Member Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Council Member Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. No business tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Personnel Organization Committee, Council Member Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in personnel and organization.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. All right, I gotta take a breath. Council Member Adams, Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have several items tonight. Under Planning and Development, we will start with the first item, a reappointment of Ms. Elaine Penley Sears to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2026. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As Councilman Adams has read, Ms. Elaine Penley Sears would like to be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. She's served for about two terms currently, and she wants to continue. She's retired, so she enjoys serving on Historic Reservation Commission, and there are no other individuals interested in serving on this board at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Did you say she had retired? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Funny, I went to see her yesterday.
Somebody else cut your hair?
No, ma'am. I was in her shop yesterday.
Well, I guess in, in the workforce, she told me she retired. When we were looking for resumes, she stated that she didn't have an up-to-date resume because she no longer is in the workforce.
I understand, okay. Well, she is definitely still in the same location, still resides at the same home. So I don't think we have an issue with that, but I guess she was just too busy to come up with the, the updated information. Questions, comments concerning this reappointment? Ms. Jackson, do you have any other information? You said there's no one else that has shown an interest in serving in that position?
No, sir, there's no one else.
And she does desire to be reappointed? Okay. I see no reason why we cannot place this item on the consent agenda? All in agreement? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll do that then. Item B. Item B was tabled from February 6, 2023, hold a public hearing and consider request for variance from Section 3.07(b) of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the minimum square footage for a three-bedroom multifamily unit from 1,500 square feet to 1,200 square feet on approximately 53.846 acres at Lee Road Land Lot 719, 720, 721, 722, District 18, Section 2. Parcel number is 07191820005. Application by Novo Sweetwater Owner LLC, Careoff Parks Huff and Mike Griffith. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Shayla Reed, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. Giving a opportunity to present this, I wanted to remind you that this was a applicant who was on the previous agenda, but we had to have an opportunity to give for them to have their full team here. So with that, I start my presentation to you. They are requesting, like, this is, sorry, not the same PowerPoint, sorry about that. I'll continue. With that, the applicant is requesting to have an apartment complex with a three-bedroom unit. The three-bedroom units, by what staff is requiring of them, they are, per the ordinance, required to have 1,500 square feet. They're, they're asking for a reduction in that, and with that, staff received an application from them to have a administrative variance. In that administrative variance, they provided that they wanted to see a reduction in their three-bedroom, which serves at about 30 units out of the 300. With that, staff found that that was not something that we would be able to provide to them, per the hardship that they provided. They provided that they did not have topography issue, they had topography issues, they say, but then they still gave us an opportunity to see the development carry out. So with that, staff recommended denial of their administrative variance. And so with that, we move forward with, PowerPoint is not, okay. So with that, staff recommended denial of it, and we still have the same assessment to move forward.
So you had an application for an administrative variance which was denied, and so it's now being brought forward to the full council and mayor?
Correct. So the process would be, if an administrative variance is denied by staff, they have two options. They can appeal the administrative variance, or they can go about requesting it directly to council.
Okay.
And the applicant is present if you have any project-specific questions.
Sure. If the applicant would like to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please, please, we would love to hear from you. Please understand that our mayor has already given us the, the time constraints, I'm sorry, already given us the time constraints as to those that you're under, and I'm assuming that our Assistant City Clerk will be keeping up with the time, correct? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Mayor and councilmembers, hi. I'm Connor McNally. I'm a principal with Shelton McNally Real Estate Partners. We're the developer of the project, and I'm at 999 Peachtree Street, Northeast Atlanta, Georgia. Shayla was trying to bring up, we had a PowerPoint that we had submitted to try to walk you through this. I think she's trying to bring it up, but in the, in the spirit of time, maybe I'll, I'll start. I know you have nothing visual, but.
Go right ahead. Sure.
So, and again, we appreciate everyone's, you know, time to hear us out on this today. You know, I think we, we see three reasons why, or first, let me sort of refocus us on what it is we're asking for today. The, in the, the city code, there is a requirement, a minimum square footage requirement for units in a multifamily community for ones, twos, and threes. Our one bedrooms and our two bedrooms comply with that, but our three-bedroom units are 1,248 square feet, and the required minimum in the code is 1,500 square feet. So we are requesting a variance, technically, to go down to 1,248 square feet instead of 1,500 square feet. That request only applies to 10% of our units, so the community is 300 units, and 10% of those units are three bedrooms. And so the difference in square footage between what the code is requiring and what we are actually building is only about 2.5% of the total square footage. That's what's at, at question here. And from our perspective, there's really three reasons that we see that it would be reasonable for council to grant this variance. The first one is that we, we do believe that there's been some hardship created for us merely by, by the fact that we are a year into this process of having requested this variance and brought this to the attention of staff. We are already eight months under construction, and we still don't have a resolution to this issue. And we understand, we've appreciated working with Shayla and her team since she came in, and understand she's, her perspective and the staff's perspective- and understand she's her perspective and the staff's perspective was not to grant an administrative variance. The feeling was that this body needed to make that decision, and we respect that. That said, the fact that it's taken a year to get us to this point with multiple attempts and put us now in a position where we have very little options because we're fully under construction with our building permits and moving forward. So our options to change things are quite limited. In addition to the fact that we communicated the square footages of all of our units through every single public meeting that we had. Able to bring up the PowerPoint, so I'll see if I can catch this up. The the subject property, just as a reminder, is at the intersection of Lee Road and Interstate 20. So the variance request, as I pointed out, is to go from 1,500 square feet really to 1,248 square feet, and that represents 2.6% of the total square footage. So the the three reasons we we believe the variance is justified are the the length of time that it's taken to get here and the difficult situation we're now in where we're under construction on a project, yet have a design-related variance that's at question. We're literally out in the field getting ready to pour foundations. Every communication that we've had with with the city and with staff has shown that square footage. We understand that, you know, a variance has some technicalities to it, but at no point was this hidden or not discussed. It was it was open and part of every single conversation we've had. The second piece we would point out, and this hopefully would give council comfort, we believe, in granting this variance, is that the code, we actually don't believe the specifics of the code as it relates to three-bedroom units really are consistent with the intent of the code. If the intent is to prevent unhealthy and cramped living conditions, requiring 1,500 square feet for a three-bedroom unit in an apartment community isn't necessary. It's too many square feet. And I'll go into some detail on that. And the third and last piece is that we don't see evidence that this code has actually been enforced in the city, either in the past or currently. Over 90% of the multifamily communities in the city of Douglasville don't comply with this code. And in fact precedent, you know, more recently, there's three projects under construction that don't comply with this code either, and we don't see any evidence that there's a variance in place. So to to get into just a little bit more detail on these points, I'm showing here the project timeline. I won't dwell too much on this, but we we were rezoned. We got our PRD zoning ordinance back in June of 2021. We actually had an administrative variance that was handled related to parking. The city code is a little outdated as it relates to parking, and that was understood by staff. We went through a process to change from 2.25 spaces to 1 and 1/2 spaces per thousand. Our development plan was approved in October of 2021. And again, at all of the staff meetings and the council meetings in this room, we were showing the unit counts and the square footages. In January of 22, when we closed on the property and closed on our loan, our due diligence with our lender going through the code and the design brought up this issue, that there was there was a difference between the code minimum and what our square footage was. And that's when we brought it to the attention of staff. We were given very clear direction and feedback by by the staff member, Ryan Anderson was the gentleman's name, that that was understood, and that that could easily be handled with an administrative variance, that his opinion was would be granted. So we made that. We were first asked to write a letter, then we were asked to actually put a formal variance application and pay a fee, and we did that in March of 2022. We continued to follow up. We we began construction of the project in May. By July of 2022, after repeated follow-up, we then discovered that the variance had maybe been misplaced. I think Ryan Anderson no longer works with the city. And so we understand that, you know, maybe some of the direction he was giving us was, you know, wasn't consistent with what what the city was wanting to do, and he no longer works at the city. In August, once we kind of realized all of that, in August, we reapplied for the bedroom variance. And then by and we started having some conversations with Shayla and and her team. And by December, got to the point where, you know, there was a realization that staff was not comfortable granting this variance administratively, and that's why we're here tonight. And just to recap this, what's on the screen right now is a slide that we showed repeatedly at at all of the the zoning and development plan meetings, where we showed exactly what our bedroom mix was and what the square footages were, and highlighted in yellow there is the three-bedroom size. So the the second reason why we think granting of this variance is is perfectly reasonable for for this body to do is that we do think that there's this code isn't really consistent with the the intent of the UDO. So if you see here, the minimum square footage is for a one-bedroom is 750, for a two-bedroom is 1050, and the three-bedroom is 1,500. Going from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom unit, you typically add both a bedroom and a bathroom. You rarely these days see two-bedroom, one-bathroom units being developed. You see two-twos. And a bedroom generally is about 150 square feet, and a bathroom is is usually a little smaller than that. So that the jump from 750 to 1050, that's a jump of 300 square feet from a one to a two, makes sense. The jump from a two to a three is 450 square feet. And and that really, to us, doesn't make sense. That's far more area than you need for a third bedroom. And and again, it's inconsistent with the difference between the one and the two. But more specifically, and I'm showing here on the screen, our actual unit plan for the three-bedroom unit, staff points out very correctly that the disparate and intent of the ordinance is to prevent, you know, cramped and unhealthy living conditions. You know, the city doesn't want that, and we understand it. But our bedrooms, the the two extra bedrooms besides the master in this design are almost 160 square feet. They're 13 by 12. That's a size that allows for a full closet, a king bed, two bedside tables. It's it's an ample size by any objective measure for a bedroom. In fact, International Building Code requires a minimum of 70 square feet per bedroom. So we're more than double the the minimum square footage required. And in fact, we're just pointing out here as well that that in the city of Douglasville, in the R5 Single Family Cottage Residential District, you can actually build with a minimum of 1,200 square feet. So we don't think it's consistent or reasonable to request or to suggest that a three-bedroom apartment in an apartment community has a minimum square footage that's actually bigger than than what you could build a two- or three-bedroom single-family home for in another district in the city. And and finally, when we look around, you know, it it appears to us that this is a section of the code that, quite frankly, just doesn't seem to have been enforced or or applied. We've gone and done some research, and of the 26 communities that we found in the city of Douglasville, multifamily communities of some size, that's typically over about 50 units, that 92%, 24 of the 26 communities we looked at, don't comply with this code. They have average square footages for units that are below the the required minimums in the code. Looking at at 18 of those communities are the ones that don't comply with the three-bedrooms. They have three bedrooms that are below 1,500 square feet. Again, that's 90%. And then and and these range from communities that are 50 years old to communities that are new or under construction. So 86% of the communities developed since 2000 also don't comply with this code. And and specifically, there's three projects under construction. One is recently recently completed, but three projects that are new, just like ours, are under construction, went through a rezoning process. We don't see any evidence that there was any discussion of a variance or a variance granted. We've we just haven't seen that. And so the the evidence suggests to us that this just isn't something that's been enforced. And so our position is, I think it's necessary for it to be enforced based on the conversation we had about the unit sizes. And and we think by enforcing it on us would be selectively enforcing a piece of the code in one situation when it hasn't been applied in others. So so really, to conclude, there's there's sort of these three reasons. One, this has been a long process, and we think it's 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 arrived at a point where we're still discussing a variance while we're well into the construction process and working with with building plans that we already have in hand. And we think that creates a hardship hardship situation. Two, we think it's more than appropriate for council to approve this variance because what we are designing is consistent with the intent of the code, and it is not creating unhealthy or cramped living conditions in the city. And and finally, we don't think that this is a section of the code that's actually been enforced. And so we think that starting to apply it now, we we don't feel that that would be fair or appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Your name again?
My name is Connor McNally.
Mr. McNally, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't jot the name down. I've got a couple of comments and questions, and I'll open it up for questions. Our attorney, we would plan to remove this from the table and actually have our public hearing on Monday before we vote. Is that correct?
You can have the public hearing right now. You would just have to vote to remove the item from the table first.
Even though this is not a voting meeting, we are in we are in a position to be able to do that.
You're in one now.
We're okay with that. I want to make sure. Just mixed feelings sometimes as to how we go about it. Okay. Well, since you all are here, and since we have waited on your team to be here all together, then we'll go ahead then. And first of all, then, I will make a motion to remove from the table item 23-039 so that we can have that public hearing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to remove from the table. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair of Planning and Development Committee, Councilmember Mark Adams, and second by Mayor Protem, City Councilmember Terry Miller, to remove from the table item 23-039. Do we have any additional conversation, concerns, or any dialogue from council members about removing this item from the table? I don't see any. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-039 is unanimously removed from the table.
Okay. So making sure we took care of that technicality, Mr. McNally. And thank you, Ms. Jordan. Couple of things, Mr. McNally, I want to ask a couple of questions. First of all, I don't I don't think I've spoken with you personally about this, and I am truly apologetic and sorry for the position that you all have been placed in as far as our city staff changes and the amount of time that it's taken. I don't know if a municipality has not been affected by it. I don't see that as a legitimate reason why you would think that the city would owe you a variance only because you've been put through hardship. Honestly, I don't see that. I'm sorry. I just don't agree with that. We've all been through a very trying time in the last three years with COVID and with staff challenges, and I can do nothing but defend our staff. They did not feel, and I'm speaking specifically for Ms. Reed at this point, did not feel comfortable with her being young as a new staff member as far as experience with this council and with mayor. And so she didn't feel comfortable in doing an administrative variance, and I respect that. So having said that, then let's move on. Okay. When you applied for the rezoning and when you mentioned the development plan, did your development plan include 10% of the of the development in three-bedroom units that had 1,500 square feet in them?
No, our development plan, the plans have never had three-bedroom units of that size. I mean, the the slide I showed earlier was from our first rezoning hearing. The the design has not changed since then.
Okay. Point well taken. No problem. I don't personally have a problem. I understand from I've been on your side of the desk, the desk. I understand where you're coming from. I know you have an extremely challenging site. I'm by it two or three times a week. I see it for myself. But I would think that more of your your potential problem here in the last 18 months has been weather as much as it's been anything. Looking at your project, seeing what you're going through, seeing what has to be done, knowing the challenge of the site and the access to the site, I'm I'm with you. Okay. I would not want the intent to be that we were trying to in any way discriminate, nor set a precedent of doing something for you or for anyone else that we would not do for everyone. And with you having 10% of the development in three-bedroom units, this is in my ward. I share the ward with with Councilmember Miller, and I want I want to hear from all of the council members concerning this. But if there's if there's anyone else here, after we let the council ask questions, then if there's anyone else here that would like to make a statement, we need to run it. We're running against our time, so let's make sure that we're respectful of that. I'll just open the floor to see if there's anyone that has questions or comments, and I'll start with Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, sir. First, I would like to apologize as well. I that is quite a bit of time to have to for this to linger on, but I do commend our staff for stepping up and doing what they thought was correct. My first concern, of course, was was why are you wanting to do this, which I think that question has already been answered. And then my next concern would just be, will this negatively impact the quality of the project?
Would the granting of the variance negatively affect?
Yes.
No, because again, the the quality of the project, which was debated in this room quite a bit before you granted the rezoning, has not changed. The the units, this was merely a case of not realizing that the code wasn't consistent with what we had presented and and what got approved at this body. So that I'm sorry, but to directly answer your question, not at all. 1,200 for a three-bedroom unit. We had developed this same basic design in in eight other locations. We have occupied leased and sold properties with this design, and it's extremely well received. And that three-bedroom unit, in fact, is probably the most popular unit plan that we have. In your communities, we're doing more than 10% of them.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, is that coming down to a smaller square footage, that the residents in these units would not be losing any amenities that they could have had with a larger square footage. Thank you. That was all.
Others? Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of comments. First, I would be cautious that the well, he knocked a liquor store off and didn't get caught, but I did get caught. Isn't that always the best defense? Second is that the established precedent for code reviews, whether zoning or building, it's still incumbent upon the owner and the owner's representatives to know the code. And if the code says X and you do Y, even if it gets all the way through the approval process, it's still incumbent if it's caught at any moment, any part of the thing. If I were to design, you know, a building that missing a firewall between two tenants, and it comes down to, you know, the the code official at the the fire marshal during the building inspection sees it, it has to get changed at that point because that's the code. The code is the code. So I think that's something to for the council to take into consideration. The other thing is, I think that my understanding is that the concept behind understanding that the going from the square footage of one-bedroom to two-bedroom to three-bedroom is not just simply an additive process. It isn't, you're okay, you add 150 square feet plus another 70 for the for the bathroom. You also have you're also adding to the living space as well. You're also adding to the kitchen space and the dining space. So proportionally, it's also going up. It's not just going up additively. It's going up proportionally to the number of people who are living in the space. So I don't think I think it's a little over simplistic to say that if it goes from 750 to 1050, then it should go to, you know, another 300, which would be 1,350, which you're still under. You're still under that 1,350. I think also that, you know, if you're asking for a variance, you know, based on a understanding of or consideration of where you are in the design process, you know, let's say, you know, if it's 1,200 and you were, let's say, the it's 1,500 is the square footage, and you were at 1,450, you know, that's splitting hairs. And I say, I say, okay, you know, you're pretty close. I think, you know, we don't have a problem with. But, you know, you're you're over 200 square feet below the 1,500. So it's it's a little harder to be empathetic toward that type of variance. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Others? Councilman Estes?
Mayor Protem just asked my question.
All right. What about you, Madam Mayor? I see you.
Yes, sir.
Want to make a comment?
I just had a a comment. I was going to ask staff. I know Ms. McNally had given us some statistics about the 24 developments, and he referenced that they were from previous times up to current date. And so I know we are continually, as we are allotted from the ARC and the region, to update our comprehensive plan and our UDO and all of that. So did we isn't an update that from the 1,500 square feet when we redid our comp plan, our comprehensive plan and our Uniform Development Code?
I'm sorry, are you asking if the?
Yes, did it go up from 1,200 to 1,500 based on us doing if we have 90% at less than 1,500 feet for three bedrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it different? Has something changed whereby the people in the past have not had a 1,500 square feet? And you may not be able to answer that question. City manager, do you understand? I know Ms. Reed is new.
I think I can address that. We haven't really done an analysis on when those properties were built. But what I because what I can tell you is that the UDO, I think it explicitly states that regardless of what took place in the past, it does not alleviate the responsibility of the current applicant to follow the UDO. So even if there are properties that are grandfathered in that maybe got passed the process, it is still the responsibility of the current applicant to follow the current UDO. Our UDO has been in place for the last two years. We will go and check that to see how many of those units were there. We'll have that for you before Monday night. But it would not change the current applicant's responsibility as far as what has to be adhered to.
Yes, ma'am. And so that's what I was really referring to or trying to get to. And city managers really answered the question. If the the other two or four, however many that you surveyed, were If the other two or four, however many that you surveyed, were within that 1,500, could be because our UDO has changed and the square footage was added for the health and safety of the residents who live there because the studies have shown that you have more people there. I understand what you're saying about going from 750 to 1,050, you know, to 1,500. It's kind of like math and it can be 1,200, but if you have more people, they're going to need more space. So this is just some comments. Thank you so much. But you did answer the question, and we'll have that information for us by Monday to help us make a determination. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Coach?
I would be interested in knowing, and I don't know if we would have access to this information, where there are apartments in the city or even the county that are three-bedroom and are 1,500 square feet or closer to that number, and whether or not, you know, because what I heard tonight was that it's, that extra square footage isn't really necessary for a three-bedroom. It's a big jump from, you know, 450-foot, square-foot jump. But I, you know, I would just be curious, I don't know how to even get that information and find out if there are other... Yes, ma'am?
We'll just have to determine when those units were constructed and then what ordinance was in place, because keep in mind, we've had several different changes to the ordinance, so it's going to take us some time. So it's not just what happened two years ago, but it would have been what happened in subsequent years. But we will get that information for you as quick as possible.
Thank you.
City Manager Matt also adds that it's based on zoning as well. PRD and PUD allows apartments, so those are two different zoning classifications.
Thank you. How much time do, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Burdella, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
No, my questions have been answered. Thank you so much.
How much time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, we have 8 minutes 39 seconds left for anyone who would like to speak in favor.
Okay. Has the applicant taken their time?
Yes, their time was included in that 20 minutes in favor of the item.
Okay. Was there a comment that you would like to make, sir? If so, quickly identify yourself and make your comment. We need to move on.
My name's Joel Larkin, I'm with the firm Sam's Larkin &amp; Huff, and you may recall, I was here for the presentations when this went through zoning. I wanted to clarify one issue that's come up, that on this property, the lender became aware of this discrepancy. And I participated in the process with them, and we contacted the city of Douglasville...
I see that.
And explained the issue to them and expressed our concern that we may need to delay and it could jeopardize the project even potentially. And we spoke with Mr. Anderson, and he absolutely assured us that it was fully within his province to grant an administrative variance, and assured us that he would do that. And I know we didn't get that in writing, but he said it was very routine to do it. So to the extent that there's an evaluation of equities or responsibilities, there's been no effort made here to game the system or play the rules. Every hearing we had, in fact, even the meeting that we came to and met with you two, we had that slide where we laid out exactly the number of units and the square footages and the sizes. It's been entirely consistent.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is an equitable situation where one of the main things you need to do in considering a variance is to kind of look at the impact on the applicant and the impact on the city. And we submit to you here that the impact on the applicant is huge and it threatens the project, and on the other hand, the impact on the city is negligible. This will be a first-class project. The units will be plenty big to provide first-class housing that will be in great demand by tenants, that this is not going to be a project where people are going to suffer because they don't have an apartment that's bigger than a lot of houses.
Sure.
So we'd ask you to take that...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just within the last part, let me clarify one other part, or just our perspective, as was called out in the staff report and has been discussed, the granting of a variance to another project is not the basis for us to request the same variance. We understand that, the UDO is very clear. Our assertion here is quite different from that. Our assertion is that this code has not been enforced. Enforcing it on us would be selectively enforcing it on the person who brought it to the attention of the city that it was an issue.
Okay.
That's...
Thank you. Thank you. I need to give, I need to give opportunity for those that would like to speak, to speak, please. Thank you. Anyone here that would like to speak concerning this item, either for or against, if you please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and we would be glad to hear from you. Speaking for or against, please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments that anyone would have for the applicant before we move on? Okay. Thank you all for coming in, thank you for that information. We will take this up on Monday for a vote. Move on to item C, hold a public hearing, consider request special land use permit for a wedding venue for properties owned in C Neighborhood Commercial, being 0.55 acres at 8667 Hospital Drive, Land Lot 50, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 00500150086. Application by The Wedding Knot LLC, care of Wanda Miller. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. So this is a special land use permit as mentioned. The applicant, The Wedding Knot, is requesting to have a wedding and special event venue along Hospital Drive. Currently, the property has 0.55 acres. They're asking for an event center within a N.C. Neighborhood Commercial district. Such a use is allowed in neighborhood commercial. Here, you're seeing photos of the facility, give you an idea of what the structure looks like when it comes to the parking and the full land in regards to the fencing that's around it, as well as the rear component of the structure and the interior. Along for current land use, the property is currently zoned in C with surrounding our four single-family residential developments nearby. You're going to see also some governmental land across the street from it, which you're seeing in the green colors. And then the future land use has the Regional Activity Center. The zoning aligns, so does the use within the Regional Activity Center. So this particular condition listing has three different conditions. However, staff has had a conversation, well, we had a planning commission meeting last week. During the planning commission meeting, the applicant identified that they were going to have shared parking at the location at that particular planning commission meeting. And in that discussion, we identified that the code has rules necessary for shared parking. And one of the rules that is found within the ordinance of the UDO is that there has to be a deed or covenant that records shared parking for a identification of 20 years that identifies that these two properties will be in agreement to have shared parking for this particular use that is identified in Section 8.01 of our zoning, excuse me, of our UDO. So with that, staff is asking to defer the items to allow for the applicant to have an opportunity to have that addressed first.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If the applicant would come forward, give us your name and address for the record and make your presentation, please. Could we be reminded of the time, please?
There will be 20 minutes in total for the applicant and anyone who would like to speak in favor.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. How are you?
I'm great. How are you guys?
Good.
Good afternoon. My name is Wanda Miller. My address is 7380 Riverwalk Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. I am here requesting a special land use permit for The Wedding Knot located at 8667 Hospital Drive. This venue, we would be recognized as a destination wedding spot. It's not a venue for parties. It will be strictly used for weddings, for retirements. It has, I've invested a quarter million dollars in this property, and we want to keep that elegant aviance of this event center. We have a chapel in the center that seats 70 people, unlike the other event centers that is here in the area. The opportunity to have a wedding in the church or in the chapel, we have that. We have a ballroom. We also have a guarding pavilion that is screened in that holds about 200 people. Our ballroom only, it's limited to 99 people, and we have a stage on the outside that gives you, if you're renting the guarding, it gives you a wedding either on the stage or a wedding under the pavilion. We have a bar that sits, that seats about 12 people in the back. And we're just asking for your prayers and granting us the special land use.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and then I'll ask any of the other council or Madam Mayor may have any. Ms. Miller, you have opened this, you already opened and have been operating or have operated at this facility, correct?
No, it's not open. We had one event in the parking lot, which I was not under the understanding that because we didn't have the business license for the building, we had an event in the parking lot. But I wasn't under the understanding that we had to have a permit if we did an event or anything there.
Okay. So you haven't opened for business?
No, we're not open for business.
I understand from staff and her report that you are in need of a shared parking agreement, written shared parking agreement, in either deed or covenant form for up to 20 years, for a 20-year term. Do you own this property?
I do.
Okay. And so you would need to deal with a neighbor, whether it be right side, left side, or possibly across the street. Of course, we know that that is our county courthouse, but then there are written documents that we would be in need of according to staff, okay?
Sure.
And you understand that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Questions, comments? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming in, Ms. Miller. I do have, I just wanted to know if this is standard across the region, I mean, or in the metro area, that you have to have a shared parking lot for 20 years? That seems obscure to me in a long time, because you can sell your business to someone else and they may not need the parking, or your neighbor can sell, and so that just seems like it's a, that's pretty hefty for 20...
So shared parking is pretty any municipality, to whatever standard they require. I can find out if the years are comparable, but I can't say that anytime a sale takes place, those deeds and covenants are mentioned at that time.
Okay. Now, and the other thing is, I did, for the council's information, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Chris Hanley, who owns Hanley Insurance next door to Ms. Miller's property. He said that it was okay for her. He said, "Do you hear me? It's okay for her to have the parking and the sheriff called today about the courthouse," and said that it was, he was giving his permission. But I did say to the sheriff that you probably need to put that in writing, and we would have, if we need to, we need to have Mr. Hanley put it in writing as well. But subsequently, after having that meeting, I did receive an email from staff to let us know that, it comes from the county attorney, that the parking lot is not the sheriff's, is for him to have security and law enforcement over, but it says, "According to the GIS, the courthouse located at 8700 Hospital Drive, the main and current courthouse is owned by Douglas County Government." So it's the Board of Commissioners who would need to give an authorization and a letter for parking and not the sheriff of Douglas County.
Yes, ma'am. That makes total sense. He's an elected official, and that could change.
So that's just for information. So I know Mr. Hanley said it was okay, but we probably would need to get a letter from him.
My question would be for staff also, and I've already expressed this concern to Ms. Reed, is how many spaces are required? I know that Mr. Hanley is on the corner there, I know the, I know the business, I know him personally, and it would just depend upon how many spaces he could provide. And I'm assuming that the reason for the 20-year agreement is because this building owned by, by the owner, Ms. Miller, would need that as long as she's operating that type of business there, because originally, this was built as a photography shop, which would have had far, far, far fewer people attending at any one time. Okay? Right, Garrison Photography originally was, it was there. So that's the reason for that requirement. I think Coach Watts had a question. Go ahead, sir.
That's a busy little spot there, five lanes. Is there a crosswalk that would go from where the shared parking would be taking place to y'all's lot? Because that's, you know, it's five lane.
It's a sidewalk, a sidewalk from Mr. Hanley's parking lot to ours.
Now, I was talking about if y'all were using across the street.
At the courthouse.
Yes, it's a crosswalk.
There's a crosswalk at the intersection.
There is a crosswalk there, okay.
Yes.
I mean, I drive by there all the time, just hadn't noticed that. Okay. Thank you.
Others? Other questions? Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes, that facility, I've been there to take many of pictures years ago. It was Garrison Photography, and in the back, he had a waterfall and a stage. And I don't know how he got all the people there, but it was always busy. My question is, the person that opened up the event hall three or four doors down, did she have to do all the 20 years, did she have to do everything?
Kimber Light.
That is something I can check for you before Monday. I can do the research and come back to you on Monday.
Yes.
She might predate the, if this is part of the UDO, she might have predated that, so it's possible.
See me?
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yes, I have a question and comment.
Yes, Ms. Danley.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, I could not see you. Mr. Mayor Protem is blocking you, sir.
Back up some, Mayor Protem, so he can see me.
Hardly equips anyone around here.
It's okay, it's amazing, I'm teasing. Thank you so much. Your renovation of the, your building is very, very nice. I do agree with Madam Mayor that 20 years is a long time. If we can get that research to give you a little bit of leniency if this is voted upon. And also, Mr. Hanley is next door, but also behind your location as well as the other locations outside of Mr. Hanley, could that be considered as shared parking as well?
Yes, it can, and due to your, the ordinance, we only require to have 31 parking spaces. We have 21, and Mr. Hanley has 23.
Gotcha. So you technically would not, I'm sorry, Ms. Reed, were you going to say something?
So our calculations are different. So she's being categorized as an event center, and so event center with her square footage would have 152 spaces. She has 20 and would only have additional 23 with the letter that was provided to us today. So she'll be missing a number of spaces that she would need to have additional parking for.
I would have thought that there would need to be more than 30 some odd for an event of that size with a possibility of over 100 people in your ballroom.
Right, because the way that I read the ordinance, it said the largest room or square feet in the building, not the entire building, but the largest room that's in your ordinance. The largest room is 775 feet.
Okay.
And they said 25 square feet per 775, one parking space. So 25 into 775 is 31 square feet, I mean, 31 parking spaces.
We'll take that into consideration as far as what the ordinance says and the information that's provided by staff. I understand, there's no reason for us to argue that point at this moment. Thank you, though, for that input. If there are no other questions...
A couple of them.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Ms. Miller, I understand you've already got a build, you're ready to go, then? You've got the space finished?
Well, I'm gonna do some more decorating.
It's a lot of faith in the process. Okay, I was just curious. There's a lot of Millers in this room, by the way.
I'm sorry.
I said there's a lot of Millers.
A lot of Millers in this room.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam.
Thank you for your investment.
Yes, thank you so much, and I apologize, I did want, and I'm getting all these phone calls, and I just saw another text. So Board of Commissioners, I guess one of the concerns would be liability, and the Commissioner Robinson wanted to make certain if we had a, I'm not sure if we had, and I think I've talked to the chief about this before, for people with disabilities or site limitations to get across the street. I know there is a market, it does a countdown, so would that be, he was just concerned about people walking across the street from the event to the courthouse, and if something happened, liability issues.
Who is he?
Council, I mean, Commissioner Kelly Robinson.
Okay. With all due respect, I think we need to have that conversation with them...
Yes, sir.
And see if they are willing on their behalf, or maybe they need to have that conversation.
Okay.
Try to come up with the parking spaces that are going to be required.
Mm-hmm.
Try to come up with the parking spaces that are going to be required. Um, us being in um connection with them as to helping them do that, I'm, I'm not sure it wouldn't draw us into a potential liability situation.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does. He just, he, I was trying to get him back.
Other questions? Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf for or against this application? Uh, this being a public hearing, we need to give opportunity for that. So if there is anyone, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. Let us know that you are speaking either for or against, and we would love to hear from you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Abdoumadi Al-Husani and I live in 2860 Legion Lake Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I have been knowing Ms. Miller for over 30 years and she has been really providing very good services for our citizens here in Douglasville. And um I believe that such services she's asking to have, we needed it. And why not to keep it locally and it's to the foremost to drive all the way to Atlanta. And I understand the legality aspect of it and I leave that to you, of course, and the only thing probably you need to focus more on is the safety. And if there's no safety issue, and especially the neighbors, they're willing to, to have her to share the, the parking lot. So please put that in consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Others?
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Nicole Conley and I've been knowing Ms. Miller over 10 years. And I think this is a wonderful event center that she's come up with. I am a wedding planner, an event planner, and what she's trying to do is keep things formal with this, with this wedding center she's got going on. And everybody in here has kids, everybody went through COVID. We all have outfits that we never got to wear, right? I think this is, would be wonderful to plan, you know, formal events. This would be a good thing for a little Cinderella ball for the children, you know what I'm saying? It's good to, for the children to learn formal. Like you said, you go to the, the school and read books, the children need to learn formal, you know what I'm saying? So I think this would be a perfect opportunity for Douglasville.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Are there others?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alfred Takane, 4427 Blue Ridge Drive in Douglasville. I've lived here since 1990. I, I've known Ms. Miller for more than 30 years. As a matter of fact, uh, we've done a lot of business together. I'm a business consultant by, by profession and an accountant, too. This event center, please, I plead to you guys to consider granting the special permission, please. It will help Douglas County reference to job creation, help the local economy, and uh it would be good for, for the city. Please. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Is there anyone else?
Is that a barber?
How y'all doing? My name is Janet Mayner. I've been living in Douglasville for, well, I don't live in Douglasville anymore, but I got a business in Douglasville.
You need to cut me up, Je, uh, Barbara Mayner.
Yes, Barbara. I own, you got an ex barber shop. And like I said, I've been knowing Ms. Wonderful about 14 years and she does a lot out here for the community. And the thing about her event center is, is it doesn't have the same amenities as, as the other uh event centers out here. So, and like my wife said, it'll be good, you know, for kids to learn how to be formal or, and y'all, like she said, COVID was here and we gotta get ready for these new events. So I think it'll be a good addition to the city, even though it's next to an event center. Like I said, it's got different amenities, all on the outside and the inside. So I wish you all would grant her the uh, the space.
Thank you very much. Others? Anyone else? Is there anyone here that would speak in opposition to the application? Okay, seeing uh no others, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing. And if there are no other questions, then we will plan to take this up on Monday. And I'm hoping that our staff will have us some, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, I'm about to run past you, sir.
That's okay, uh, my friend. Uh, event centers, uh, they mostly take care of their self. If I'm doing a wedding of a thousand, I come to an event center that only holds about 50, I'm gonna move on. So basically, when, when the wedding party or whoever comes out to the event center, they can only accommodate so many people and so much parking. So it would take care itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, we will then take this up on, is there any other comment? Anyone else? All right. Yes, uh, Ms. Hampton?
Councilman, um, Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to have staff work with Ms. Miller to see if uh she would be able to get those written documents um before Monday? Because um regardless of what the ordinance says, she's gonna be required to have a shared use agreement in order for you all to move forward um to take any action. And um you all would need that on Monday.
I think it would be incumbent upon her to do that in written form according to what the requirements are uh in order for us to move forward, because without that, we really don't have the, we really don't have the authority to move forward if we do not have that information in place, written information.
Yes, sir. And I would just add that that written form is not necessarily a letter. It, there are specific things that the code requires in that written form. So I wouldn't want you to get something that you don't have all the details by Monday.
Ms. Miller, would you be willing to, to get with Ms. Reed as to exactly how that needs to be worded and what needs to be done? All right, thank you. We look forward to that. Thank you, Ms. Hampton, for that input. All right, if there's nothing else on that one, we will move on then to item D. Again, hold a public hearing and consider a request for special land use permit for job training and vocational rehabilitation services for property zone PUD, Plan Unit Development District being 1.57 acres at 3270 Darby Drive, Land Lot 155, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 0155, 015, 0219, 0155, 015, 0220, and 0155, 01, 50103. Application by Future Seekers Incorporated, Care of Dr. Sandra Hall. Ms. Reed?
Thank you, sir. This is a special lane use request as mentioned. The applicant, Future Seekers Incorporated, they're requesting to have a job training and vocational rehabilitation service at 3270 Darby Drive. Uh, this is a special lane use request. Uh, the property is 1.57 acres. Uh, the property is currently zoned PUD with a base of general commercial. As you know, this is the um clubhouse location for the existing Tributary subdivision. Uh, they are under the impression that they would like to move forward with allowing for that, that particular structure to be used for a different use than that. And so with that, we have uh reviewed the application and found that the current um area is PUD, as I mentioned, has a base zoning of commercial, and it allows for a future lane use of mixed use design. Staff has found that um this particular request does fit the requirements um spelled out in our Unified Development Ordinance, and we find that it does not cause a nuisance um within the surrounding areas.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
They are.
The applicant would please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and we're ready to hear from you. Hello, Mr. Fowler.
Evening, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49. I'm here tonight with Dr. Sandra Hall. She is the founder and operator of Future Seekers. That's an organization that provides job tr, job training, vocational rehabilitation services at the building that you just saw. Those services are currently being provided or will be provided for middle and high school students as currently authorized by your code. But if it's going to be persons over than those ages, you have to have a special use permit. Application is for just that, the special use permit. It was unanimously recommended for approval by your Planning and Zoning Board, and Dr. Hall will explain the nature of their services and the reason for this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you, City Council, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Um, my name is Dr. Sandra Hall-Lay. I reside at 2749 Jakarta Lane, Atlanta, Georgia, 30331. Um, Future Seekers Incorporated, uh, is a youth development and young adult development organization. We specialize in develop, in the development of training programs for middle school, high school students, and 18 students that are 18-plus years and older. Um, we have been providing these services now for over 20 years. As a matter of fact, we are celebrating our 20th year um this year. Um, before we even became an organization, uh, those of us in the Atlanta community decided to start this organization and provide the services to the youth that were really in need of services, much like what was described earlier in this program when you all were, well, in this meeting, where you all were talking about the importance of the impact um on our youth in reading and literacy programs. And we provide those, we have done so for um many years to many different counties in the state. So not only have we already serviced youth in the Douglasville area, but we've serviced youth in Fulton County, Bibb County, um Cobb County, several counties in the state of Georgia, which we do hope to become uh an organization that will serve all of the counties in Georgia one day. So we actually provide um after-school and summer programs and some programs in intercessory times. That means when the kids aren't in school, when they're at spring break or winter break, um, when, when parents still need to go to work and they want to place their kids with us so that we can impact them positively academically, socially. Um, so we offer those homework assistance, that tutoring, that robotics, and you know, STEM came online many years ago and that was a buzzword, but we have sort of perfected that robotics program where we exposing students to a lot more than um just science, but exposing them to technology, engineering, and other opportunities for uh career planning in their future. As we are here today, asking for an opportunity to continue to provide services to students that are not typically the school age, secondary uh school age, but post-secondary, because not all post-secondary um educated students want to go to college. And these days, you really don't have to in order to make a whole lot of money. So what we're doing is we're providing job, career um certifications for these students, where they receive um MSC, Microsoft certifications, construction certifications, and CNA certifications, that Certified Nursing Assistance, which we plan on growing this program, but we have been providing these services for over seven years now uh to students that are still in high school and students that are in alternative school. Certification. So that's where we are now. We just want to provide these services that we are already experienced at to um a population that is over 18 years of age.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Uh, questions, comments? Let's start on the far end with Mr. Estes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good to see you, Dr. Hall.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Um, how is the, the rehab on the building going?
It's going, sir.
They had, uh, during the freeze at Christmas, they had some major water damage coming from the attic that basically flooded the entire building.
Entire building. Four days after we closed.
Um, just a couple of quick questions for you. I mean, number one, welcome to the neighborhood. We're happy to have you there.
I'm very blessed and happy to be here.
Um, I know we, when we spoke before about your plans, I, I just want to confirm just a couple of things very quickly. Um, number one, I mean, there is, I, I don't know how many parking spaces there are there, but you're never gonna have any need to go beyond what the parking is available there, I'm guessing. Because for the size of that building, I don't know how you could, especially if you've got younger students coming there most of the time.
Exactly.
So, so you're good parking-wise where you won't need to have students parking out in the community?
Absolutely, yes, sir. I believe so.
Okay. Um, and then the other question I have um was your hours of operation. And I know when we spoke before, you had, had said, I believe, that everything would be completed during the week by 7:00 in the evening.
Absolutely. Most courses will conclude by 5:00.
Okay.
Um, because what we try to do is, you know, we have smaller classrooms, first of all, and then, so we try to get the students trained throughout the course of the business day, if we can. Now, there may be those times where we would have courses that will pretty much conclude before 7:00.
Right, okay. And, and adding an older age group uh with a potential slop is not gonna change any of that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
All right, uh, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, who's next? Yes, uh, Mr. Burdan, Ms. Burdanley.
Councilman Davis, Chief of Charge.
All right. Hi, Dr. Hall.
Hello.
Thank you so much for presenting such an awesome um business that is so needed in our county. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, probably three years or so, um, the Georgia Department of um Vocational and Rehab relocated out of Douglas County and is in Carrollton. So this is definitely needed. Um, you said middle school and high school and then some college, no elementary, right?
No. But that's not to say we won't go to the elementary school.
I am just very, um, this is just very needed, so perfect timing. Thank you. I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Mayor Protem, did you have anything? You're hidden there.
Uh, I do not. I'm trying to stay out of everybody.
Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
No, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Hall. I like that pen, Sorboor. Um, I do have a question. Um, and, and this is no disrespect, hopefully it doesn't come off that way. But um, and I'm asking this because I served seven years on a credentialing board for my church, and so you have a license and it is connected to an organization. So your organization, are you connected to anyone at credentialing or certifications? Who um are those instructors? So that when you come into the community, the, you know, the credibility of your organization?
Well, Mayor, um, Madam Mayor, we actually try very hard to um, to hire within our community. So we will from, that we have used for years and years and years.
Okay.
But we would like to recruit from our community. And that probably won't be very hard to do. And those would be certified teachers in these specific areas.
Okay.
Microsoft is, is not hard to find a Microsoft certified instructor.
Yes.
Um, CNA, not very difficult at all, and construction as well, because construction has taken over right now. Well, the last few years, construction has been really, their stock has been out the roof with us. I mean, we've had students come in and their interest is with uh construction first, because they hear they make a whole lot of money with that.
Right.
So um, but to make sure I answer your question, yes, we will be hiring from the area eventually. But we do bring certified instructors from outside, and they are certified based on their trade or their craft.
All right, so you're an umbrella. You're just housing everything and everything flows down with those specific um criteria for those particular certifications?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Because they make better subject matter experts.
Yes, ma'am, there you go.
Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Hall, we appreciate your presentation. Um, I want to have, ask staff just to make sure there are no problems or no issues uh as far as square footage, as far as parking, as far as the building itself being appropriate for this use in this zoning classification.
No, sir, we found none in our review.
Okay. There's also uh someone in the audience that seems to be disagreeing with the previous use of this time a clubhouse. Uh, it looks like an au, a multi-story office building. Is that correct?
It was the sales center and, and office space.
So it was, it was not, it was never the clubhouse or?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, just want to, want to make sure. Okay, we need to open the floor for anyone that would like to come and speak concerning this application, it being a public hearing. Anyone that would come to speak either for or against. Uh, if you would give us your name and address for the record as you come forward, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. Vincent Irving, 3154 Borough Road. Uh, Happy Black History Month. I am a resident of Tributary and I am completely for this. I bring into the community. I remember when I was first driving through Tributary looking for a, a neighborhood to move into, I just had that feeling of welcomeness and, and growth and, and all the amazing things that I have come to know Douglasville to be. And I think this is a, a great addition to the culture of Tributary and all that we uh believe in. And as someone who has worked in youth development my entire career, you don't last 20 years in youth development if you don't know what you're doing. So I uh applied So I, uh, applied Dr. Hall and know that she's going to be around for quite a while and make a really great impact in Douglasville, so I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Anyone else? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll close out the public hearing, and, uh, we will take this up then on Monday for a vote. Mr. Fowler, did you have something else to say?
Yes, I know what's on the agenda for Monday night. I'll not be here. I'm welcoming a missionary from England. I got to pick him up at the airport, so I won't be here, but Dr. Hall will be here, if I can be excused from that.
I'm sure she can handle it.
Happy belated birthday, Attorney Fowler.
Thank you.
We can zoom in, sorry, Joe.
I know.
Okay, we'll move on to item E. Again, hold a public hearing. Consider request for change in zoning from PUD Planned Unit Development District to PUD Planned Unit Development District for one hundred and thirteen point four eight nine acres, located Brook Collar Drive, Land Lot seventy-seven, District One, Section Five, Parcel zero zero seven seven zero one five zero zero one four, and Land Lot seventy-eight, District One, Section Five, Parcel zero zero seven eight zero one five zero one five one. Application by Abdel Mahdi Al-Hussein Salim. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. I will start the presentation while it loads. Um, as mentioned, this is a rezoning request. Nice, okay. This is a, um, rezoning request for property of one hundred and thirteen acres. Uh, there is a PUD currently on the parcel. They're asking to rezone it to PUD without conditions. Um, so ba- well, with different conditions. So they're asking for the conditions basically to be revised. It's not for the conditions to change. So with that, the parcel, um, that of question, um, is a parcel that has an existing PUD and, um, R2 property surrounding the parcels, and so it has the correct future land use in place with low-density residential. And with that, staff has been working with the applicant, uh, in regards to those two thousand and three conditions that they have in place. Um, we have identified what conditions they're asking to have changed, and you'll have that in your staff report. But one thing that we did want to point out, which I am, um, I can say, when it comes to density, I, I am encouraging other applicants to do as this one is doing. He's asking to come before council to change the density versus just kind of going about doing that. Um, so he has requested to revise his density to allow for seven point six two units per acre. That existing subdivision has about, or that area has about seven point nine units per acre. So they're asking for an increase in that, but they're asking for it to be lower than what's already in the surrounding area. So it is very similar to what's already out there, and they're asking to finish that development. Um, the pictures that you're seeing here are, um, entrances along that road. Those are photos of the particular site, so that you can see what the structures are, um, resembling what's out there. And as mentioned, you're seeing the PUD and R2 surrounding zonings. Um, again, this is a piece of land that is, um, I think between, uh, the time of two thousand and eight, development pause, particular recession went in place, and so they were trying to sell this land to pick it back up to finish the development that did not take place after the recession of two thousand and eight. Um, with that, we are asking for the density of seven point six two to be allowed, and then we have conditions that you're seeing that are development standards that are listed inside of that particular staff report. Um, as you're seeing, it's going to give you those particular densities, um, that will be for each of the different developments. You're seeing where there's cottage lots and regular single-family detached structures that are being requested for this development. And in your site plan as well, I believe page twelve of that, you'll see how that site plan aligns. Uh, there are yellow parcels that are going to be the single-family detached, as I mentioned, and then the pinkish colors are going to be where the cottage homes are going to be identified. So with that, staff, um, supported the recommendation of Count, um, the Planning Commission with those conditions to allow for that development to move forward. And again, those conditions are aligned on, uh, page ten. That tells you exactly how those particular lots will be developed, and that's the condition necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is the applicant with us?
They are.
Please come forward and present your application. Give us your name and address for the record, again, please, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Abdel Mahdi Al-Hussein, and I currently live, and I have been living in the same address since I came to Douglasville back in nineteen ninety. So therefore, I have been living here more than half of my life and more than what I lived in the Holy City of Jerusalem. I live at twenty-eight sixty, Leeson Lake Road, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three five. Thank you very much for the introduction and for your help. Uh, as you can see, this is where the property is located. We are not far away from I-20 and, and Chapel Hill, and this is probably one of the largest left, land has not been developed, and, uh, we are here to develop and to see if we can put it in a good use. Um, as my friend mentioned here, this is an existing subdivision, it's called Brook Mount. It has been originally developed by, uh, J.D. Brooks, and he called Brook Mount as a legacy behind him. One of the best developer that anybody can have his house to be built over there, and we are here to continue that legacy. And, uh, as you can see there, the one that's surrounded on the right, on the left-hand side, a- and that's what we are currently building. Uh, I own over there sixty-four lots, and we just broke the ground to build the three homes over there, and one of them is going to be one point two million dollars, and the other two are going to be in dollars. Um, now, what the one in the question here, that they are, you know, in, in, in yellow, but also that they have the yellow line over there. We are not really asking for any variances. We are not trying to build any cheaper homes or less, uh, you know, space or less sizes of homes. We are going to follow exactly what the HOA is, is really asking and recommending. And I'm glad to see our friend here, Terry Miller, uh, here in, in front of us here, and also, uh, my friend, dear friend, Orec Curry, he is the president of the HOA. So our commitment, we're going to stake whatever the HOA is going to ask us, and we're going to stake and even to exceed the minimum requirement, what the city and the county of Douglasville. So therefore, please, I don't want you to think that I'm here to ask for less sizes or anything. The reason I'm here, to be honest with you, if you look at the verbiage on the right-hand side, that our, our president here, that, uh, Mr. Co- uh, Orec, he said he came to we need to have more affordable houses. All right? You have sixty-four lot over there that they are, you know, asking for four thousand square feet in a basement and fifty-five hundred, five thousand five hundred in a basement, and you already have sixty-four and have been there for a while. Why not to go ahead and change what we already have to have it more affordable? Number two, when J.D. Bubrock came up with the original plan for the hundred and fourteen acres, unfortunately, he did not do what we refer to as jo- jo- technical, uh, engineering analysis or soil testing. Right now, we did. They have hard rocks, and then literally you cannot do anything over there, and probably whoever went to, uh, Brook Mount later, you can see the rocks over there, they're huge like Stone Mountain. All right? And, and number two, we have what we call it, uh, steep slopes. And more important than that, uh, I'm partnering right now with Built Soil, they have the same vision as, uh, Madam Mayor mentioned in the, in the early, saying that we need to have more trees. And that's the idea born. They said, okay, since we have rocks, we have, you know, slope, why not to have more green space? Now, so therefore, we are, we're trying to do right now, this is exactly what we have in mind. And you can see, if I go back, you see where the, the one on the yellow over there, see, we don't have any much as of green space. Now we have more green space, and we're going to connect that this space I refer to it as Brook Mount Phase Two with the Brook Mount Phase One, the estate section, where we're going to have walking trail. We're going to have a lot of amenities over there, where, where our, you know, the resident over there, they're going to enjoy it, and they're going to have fun over there. Okay, and also, we're going to stake to build very wa- very good quality homes. That the bottom line, our mission is to have optimum level environment, where, where, where the community can enjoy the scenery, they can enjoy the green space, they can have more green space, and they can have more affordable houses. So this is what we have in mind. All right, we are still going to, to build some of the houses that we already currently have in the estate section, where we're going to have four thousand square feet and, and a base, and a slab, and fifty-five hundred and, uh, and, 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 and a basement. We will come to that, but if you can look at this one here, we are going to, to have sixty-five acres, which is roughly fifty-seven percent, all right? It's going to be designated as green space. We're going to have a walking trail over that, and it's going to be needed to the HOA. They will, we're not going to build anything there in the future. And also, uh, we already talked with the Douglas County Water Sewer System Authority. They have no problem with the water. We already have water over there, because that's an existing, or existed development there. The sewer is very good, the school system already they checked in it, they have no problem with that, and the police department. I just met with my, my friend here, Dr. Chief, um, at Spark here, and just to bring to your attention, my son, he's going to be working with them, and as we speak, he is in the police academy.
Oh, congratulations.
And he will be joining, uh, you know, to, to the community here to, to, to help us and to help, uh, so that, that's a good thing. And if there's any problem with that, the chief, let me know. I will be more than happy to do whatever you need. Okay? And that would be a good thing to do, to, you know, to give it to my son to do, but we are committed for that. And also, what we did, we want the extra space, you know, the extra step, we did the traffic and the crash study, and they came back that still, the, the streets referred to them and property theory, you know, can, can help me to explain that level of services. A, meaning the streets are in the best shape, they don't need to be, they're not going to be impacted with, with this development here. And also, we reached out to the fire marshal. They are happy with it. They're saying that provided we're going to have more than two entrances, and we already have that in mind. And, and more importantly, okay, we are teaming up with HOA, and the property can relate to that, how many times I called him, because we are building in the other section, in case if we need to have any discussion, if we need, if we have any problem, we reach out to them. We have been really working with them very nicely. And also, uh, HRC, we have here, um, Jonathan, in case if you need any help, and they are, they are from Douglas, the city of Douglasville. They are very, very well-known and renowned company that have been asked to do that. The last item I put over there, I mean, the, the city and the county, they need as much funding as possible to provide as many services, you know, to our citizen, to the school, to the police department, into the hospital and all of that. And this is just a quick calculation within probably eighty percent accuracy, right? And this development probably is going to bring over two million dollars when it come to water tab, sewer tab, fees and all of that, and then probably over a million dollars in property taxes a year. So why not? That piece of land has been there since God created Adam and Eve, and even before that. I mean, why not to go ahead and put it in a, in a best use? So right now, so this is what we have. So in the same development, all right, as you can see, it is going to be in the three different sections, the estate section, and also we're going to have it in the metro section, and also we have in the cottage section. So the estate section, we are still committed. We are not asking for any variances, and we are going to build homes over there starting from six hundred and fifty and above. And I said earlier, we already have building a half there for one point two million, and this hopefully will enhance the value of the ho- the homes over there. And this one of the rendering we are going to build, and as you can see here, of that the house on the top, that we just bought it, that's my, I gave it to my cousin to live in it, it's a beautiful house. And on the right-hand side on the top, these are the two lots that we are currently building, and, and this is what we are going to build over there. So we are there to enhance the community. We are not there to build cheap homes. We are there to make sure that we're going to have good quality living. Now, when it come to, to, to the villages, the same thing, we are going to exceed the minimum requirement of the HOA, we are going to build houses, at least they're going to be about two hundred, I mean, two thousand six hundred and fifty-two, and if we're going to have a basement there, then we're going to be more, probably it's going to be about three thousand, three thousand five hundred square feet. And the starting price for that, we are looking forward to have it around four hundred and fifty. And then we have, and this is how they're going to look like. All right, this is the current existing home in, in, in what we have over there. So just to give you the feel, but we are going to have even much better quality. They're going to have more and more, of course, with the help of Eric here, and of course, to keep us straight here, Terry, to make sure we're going to go a good job over there. Now, when it come to the cottages over here, that's really a vision, has been really born and created by, by my friend Eric here, he's going to talk about it. He said, Mahdi, I have been in Bowder Spring, and there's a community called Macconel, Macconnell, uh, Green Subdivision, and I would like you please to have there, because we do not have ranches. We need to have houses with ranches. People getting old. I don't want to come to the club because I just turned sixty, and probably I will build my home over there, and he said, please make sure you're going to build me a house over there. So that's what we have in mind, and then we're going to have them around three hundred, three hundred and fifty. So again, good, good, honest to God, good, good, good houses, we're going to build over there. And these pictures over here are from the same community in Bowder Spring, and they're selling them for four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty. All right, so probably we're going to manage to sell them a bit cheaper. And we're going to have what? A dog park over there. That's what they have over there.
A dog park.
So just to bring it, to, to show you. And, and these cottages, we, they're going to have three, four bedrooms. I mean, they're not going to be tiny ones. They're going to be the same as what we already have. And let's go, just go ahead and, and briefly to share with you, this is what we already have. I have sixty-four lot, we're building there. We you see the, the red dots there, the red lines, and we go connect it with a new development for a hundred and fourteen acres. And, and hey, we have a beautiful, uh, clubhouse, and, and thank you, Eric, and thanks for the HOA. They just resurfaced the tennis court. Look how they're beautiful. You see they're lucky, in, in blue. And, and then, you see, this is the bottom line. I would like you please to focus, we are really putting in mind here to have manful design. We are going to maintain the green, all right? We're going to, you know, continue to use the construction method that is going to, you know, to, to help us for preservation of undeveloped green space, and this is in line to what, you know, the Madam Mayor mentioned earlier. We have to have more trees, and, and, and this is going to save more than about three, four thousand trees. And, yeah, these are existing trees, and they are already giving us oxygen, they're already taking a lot of carbon monoxide from the, you know, from the air, from the air. So we're going to maintain that, we're going to do minimal land disturbance, and we're going to have friendly environmental materials, and, and then we have contemporary design and, and finishes, and we're going to provide more functional amenities for families and individuals. Just to share that with you, this is what we have in mind to put over there, and we're going to have a, a walking trail where we can get people to have bicycles, to cycle around, and to enjoy it. And, and this is the team that will be helping with us. We have Andrew Wallace, he owns Built Soil, he has, at, at any moment of time, he's in charge of over two hundred million dollars of, of development and construction. That's something to know about me. I built, I was in charge of putting the fiber optics in this country. I connected America with Mexico and Canada. I'm the one who replaced copper into fiber for AT&amp;T. I worked for them for thirty years. Once upon a time, I managed over twenty billion dollars project at the same time. So we have the experience. As we speak, I'm also managing, developing another subdivision, uh, at the end of Lake Monroe in Douglas County, and also starting next month, I'm developing another subdivision in Timble, Carroll County, a hundred and forty lot, and I've developed more than a dozen. My brother Eddie probably heard about him, and I, we built over thousands of homes here. So we are not new into this business. I'm a civil engineer, I'm a professional, uh, licensed engineer, contractors, and, and we love this. We love dirt. We, we love to make sure that, you know, these houses are going to be taken care of. These are our building, our builders, uh, that are going to help us to build, and these are, are the real estate marketing, the project management. And then, I don't want to take much time from your time, we're here to partner with, We're here to partner with, with HOA and probably Terry Miller, again, keep mentioning his name. He told you how many times we reach out to him in case we need any help. And also Eric Curry. And we have been, you know, working with them. And also to Douglasville, to create the optimum level environment for families and individuals to come out. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Because I have only twenty minutes and there's.
Um, you, you are, you, you are close. Really close. How much time do we have, please?
Um, we have six minutes and forty-eight seconds for people who may want to speak in favor of, but you all, of course, have time for your question and answers.
All right. Are there any questions or comments counsel or Madam Mayor may have? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Not a question, just a comment. Mr. Al Hussein Salim, you, I think you thought of everything that we can think of. It was a very comprehensive presentation. We're excited to, um, to hear it this evening. We appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So many cul-de-sacs.
Huh? I didn't count them.
So, I count eight at least. Is there any way you can reduce the number of cul-de-sacs?
Well, the good news is the fire marshals gave us some comment and we expanded them.
They like cul-de-sacs.
Do we have?
And, and the other limitation we have because of the rocks and the slopes.
I'm sorry?
Rocks and the slopes.
Uh-huh.
And I would be more than happy to take it over there.
I'm just, I, I'm seeing just the number of areas where you could easily connect the streets to make them, again, to, to make it more of a neighborhood and make it more of a, you know, give a little bit more pedestrian connectivity from one side of the neighborhood to the other. You still have, you know, it's still a contained neighborhood, but I just see a number of opportunities where you, and you wouldn't lose much green space at all. And, and you really wouldn't lose many lots at all if you just connected some of those streets. Um, I do have a question for staff. Do we, is there anything in the UDO that does limit the, what's the maximum length of a dead-end street that you can have? Because that, that spine street that goes, that's a long street. I don't know if there, if there is something, is there a provision within the UDO that?
So forgive me because that would be your development regs. I cannot say yes to that yet, but I can definitely find out what that requires.
Okay, yeah, we could find out about that. I'm just curious if that's something that's ever.
Mr. Miller, I would think that the reason you see the bubbles in that spine street there that you're calling is that you have to have a cul-de-sac for turnaround of emergency vehicles, ever so many feet.
No, I understand.
But I don't know that there's a, if there's a limitation or a maximum.
I just wouldn't, I just, I'd be curious to know if there was such a, if something had been written into the zoning at, at any point. But that, yeah, that's about all, you know, I mean, I appreciate.
You're welcome. But again, we already communicated with the fire marshal.
Yeah, I know. This is not a, this is not a fire marshal issue. I'm not, I'm not bringing up, I'm just, I'm bringing up a planning issue, that's all.
Other?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Hi, thank you, Mr. Salim. I am Councilwoman LaShawna Burdany. And that is my ward where, well, I'll share the word with Councilman Davis. And we definitely need in that area a facelift. So what you've presented is awesome. I would definitely like to, to see more collaboration with some residents or small businesses over there too, because we have houses and I know we need affordable housing. But in the New Horizon area where I serve and Councilman Davis, there's no access to like fresh, fresh vegetables, fresh food. So within this, a community garden would be really nice. So I really would like to, if this is passed, to work with you on that because we can have houses and houses and houses and affordable. But if our children and our seniors or just people in general cannot have access like walking to fresh fruits. And that impacts learning and everything. So I definitely would like to work on that.
We'll be more than happy. We have sixty-five acres.
Dr. Burdany, I, I beg to differ. I don't believe this is in your ward.
Oh, it's Elsie Street.
No, this is south of I-20 down Chapel Hill Road.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one before. I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
But still.
It's okay.
It's the next one, I'm sorry.
Point taken.
Point taken.
Point taken.
He listened and he said, yes. He thanked you.
But I said, yes, yes.
Coach Wash, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, Coach Wash Ward.
The, you, you stated sixty-five acres will be undisturbed green space?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and you did say that it, y'all were going to donate it or deed it to the, to the HOA?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I, I like, I like that.
HOA president sitting right there.
Okay. It being a public hearing, we do have to give opportunity for those to speak that would like to speak either for or against. Thank you for your presentation. Is there anyone here that would like to do just that? Please come forward. Let us know your name and address for the record and then whether you're speaking either for or against, please.
I'm going to be for it.
How much time do we have, ladies?
Six minutes and forty-eight seconds.
All right.
I ain't gonna be that long. Thank you, my, Eric Curry. I live eighteen, Brookhold Drive in Douglasville, Georgia. HOA president there. And what I want to say is I've been there since two thousand, became the president. I take that back. In two thousand eight, I was there, I became the president in two thousand seventeen. And I've seen where it's, it's changing. What we're trying to make it is a viable community. It's, it actually, we had developers come in. They made promises to the previous boards and some board members just was on the board, but didn't do anything. I'm very active. I'm very into the, seeing what's going on in my board and committee chairs that we have are looking at some of the things that's going on. And this is why we have changed so many times because it was set up to be one thing. And then we want to make sure that it had affordable housing for the people who would be in the community. And also looking at the school system as, as well. I'm a part of leadership Douglas. And actually, one of my classmates was the, is the superintendent, Trent North, which is, you know, as y'all know, he's going up for being the superintendent of the year. So we have talked about that. We have also talked about how we can look at this community and make it better. We're hitting on the backside. Most people don't see us off of Chapel Hill, off Beaumont and off Pope Road. But we have six villages inside of the villages of Brookmont. Where we have the estate homes, we have the cottages, we have the reserves, we have the meadows, we have the landings, and we have the enclaves, which are the townhomes, which are most of our, and we're unique because our subdivision sits in between the city and the county. So I'm also on the county side. I live on the county side, but our, most of our residents, we do have, live in the city of Douglasville as well. So we working on this and we did, we will take that into consideration about the, we had talked about that, is having a green space or something where we can grow vegetables inside of that. We were actually deeded another ten acres of land by somebody who didn't want to develop it because of those rocks that everybody that we have here in Douglasville. So we're going to look at that and seeing where we can develop things of that. And we really appreciate that, giving some ideas. That's why we came up with the doggy park, the walking trails. I'm an avid cyclist, so we're going to look at doing some cycling events there. We work closely with the police department and the sheriff's department because we have a neighborhood watch. So we want to just make sure that this is hidden and we have the viable houses that we need in the community. And we really appreciate you if you would take this into consideration. And, uh, so you'll be seeing my face more than once in and out of here. And I would definitely look forward to seeing you coaching and have you come out, as well as the mayor, come out and look at some of the development that we're having inside the villages of Brookmont. And I think there's more civic leaders should do that. See what's going on in your community with your HOAs because sometimes these HOAs can get out of hand. And I think that when you work with the community versus being against the community and work with the residents that's inside the community, it's much better. Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anyone else?
Chairman, can I make a comment too? Thank you. Yes, I'm, I was looking at the, the item next to this one, so I apologize, it is in your ward. But I want to say, Mayor Protem mentioned the cul-de-sacs. And just thinking about what you just mentioned, that your community is very unique because you can actually get into the subdivision from Chapel Hill as well as Pope. So you can drive through that subdivision and get from one side to the other, which is really good.
And Beaumont.
And Beaumont, that's right.
And Beaumont. And that's been a, that's been a, we have so many entry points that is, we're getting ready to put flocks up because we have such a, people that love to come through that area. And they speed and do other things, so we gotta try to keep this, you know, safety. And we, like I said, we work along with the, with the police department and the sheriff's department because we both split in, in the middle.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those comments. Others? Anyone else that would like to make a public comment either for or against? We're running against the clock now, so anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll take this item up on Monday for a vote concerning it. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to item F, as in Frank. I don't know how we got so many public hearings at one meeting. Staff? Hold a public hearing and consider request for change in zoning from R2 single-family detached residential to PRD planned residential development district for one point nine acres located at sixty-four seventy Elsie Street. Land Lot Nineteen, District One, Section Five, Parcel Zero Zero One Nine Zero One Five Zero Zero One Three. Application by Sheraton Jones.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, yes, sir. As mentioned, Elsie Street is requesting to have, or the parcel on Elsie Street is requesting to have a rezoning for this item. As mentioned, Sheraton Jones is the applicant and requesting to develop quadplex or quadruplex at this particular location. The property is currently zoned R2 there for one point nine acres. And the applicant is asking to rezone to PRD, which is Planned Residential Development District. And it does allow for multifamily within the PRD zoning classification. This is the current site of this particular, the structure did have some fire damage and it's still left vacant as of current right now. The zoning near this parcel to the east, what is that, the west and the south is zoned R2, which is the same as what currently zoned now for R2. The property to the, I said it wrong way, with the west and the south, I'm sorry, is R2. And then the east is industrial. And then the northern piece, as you're seeing, the larger parcels to the south, to the north is zoned PUD. This particular land use of traditional residential outlines where the parcels shown here in south and I guess to the west of that is residential, where it's more of an older community, where it's, as it, as the code says, out, outdates, where it has a, maybe some homes built around World War II, some of, some of that in age. So it's some of what older community. So we identify that to be a traditional residential. I will say that PRD is outlined as R6, as you're seeing on the screen now. R6 is an allowed use. That particular zoning classification changed during the time of our updated code of two thousand and nineteen. PRD replaced the R6 zoning classification for apartments and multifamily. With that, staff has found that the parcel only has one point nine acres. The intent of your zoning classification requires two point zero. That is to allow for the development to have the full opportunity of development. And being that the parcel is zoned R2 with surrounding parcels to the south and west as mentioned, all R2. With that, staff is asking for this request not to move forward. Because of that, we're asking for the intent to be considered of the particular zoning classification of PRD to be considering your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is the applicant here?
She is.
If so, would the applicant come forward? We do have the time, our timer is set and we would love to hear the information concerning your application, ma'am. Give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Sheraton Jones, eight zero three eight Caulkwood Street, Douglasville, Georgia.
How are you this evening?
Alrighty. First of all, thank you very much for having me. My name is Sheraton Jones, as mentioned. I'm in Ward Three. I live in Ward Three. And this is the property that sits in Ward Three. It's actually a five-minute walk uphill. It would be three minutes if it wasn't for that hill, right around the corner. So this is part of my community. I was also part of the Dos Douglasville program. I see Assistant City Manager right there who ran that. And really, actually, that encouraged me to, you know, stand in front of you and do this rezoning here. I also have my bachelor's and master's degree. I only share that with you because I want you to know, I, I do my very best to try to complete the work that I begin and give my best effort, which has been shown previously there. So as you see above here, this is the current state right now. As mentioned, it's vacant and from my research, it's been vacant at least seven years or so. It's currently a dumping zone. So we're talking mattresses, tires, and you're sitting on one point nine acres of land and around the housing, around the house, excuse me, around the property is multifamily. So this will blend well. So today I'm asking for rezoning of R2 to PRD. So here I have some pictures. First, starting off with me standing on Caulkwood Street, the street that I actually live on, as well as Elsie Street. So on that street is two duplexes alongside four, excuse me, three, four units. You move on to that next picture, that's going to show that the end of that last four unit, which sits on Caulkwood Street and Elsie Street. And then across is the church. You make your way down that road on Elsie Street, you're going to see four townhomes to your left and four townhomes to your right. And then the last picture there is where the house sits. So the house is actually very surprising to see because of all the multifamily that's surrounding the area. Additionally, if you're familiar with this area, this is a twenty-minute walk from downtown Douglasville. And as we know, the expansion of the future town green is happening, so we could expect more residents to possibly move into the area. And then we also know that Jesse Davis, which is right around the way, is also getting work upgraded. So we see upgrade, upgrades happening at the park. And then we see upgrades happening at the downtown Douglasville area in the New Horizon community, which has been lesser developed. This is opportunity here allies. I hear a poll from the GIS poll. And what this is showing is flags where four units are, are sitting. So we see in the past that four units do not need that much acreage as presented before. Actually, which I'll do here in the next picture, what the site plan, you'll see how much land is available for this four unit. So here's my site plan and that's the four plex proposed right now with the parking. Of course, I had to speak with the fire, the building permits and so forth, and they've all agreed that everything looks in line here. Again, the goal to rezone to PRD, providing additional housing. Right now, sitting as a single family, taxes are less, but with additional units, taxes will be increasing, which will help out our roads. We've already seen that happen with Caulkwood Street with the repaving there. And then additionally, I have here just some renderings of two units, excuse me, two-bedroom, two-bath roommate style. As we start to bring in businesses, we also want to keep in a mixed range of, of residents. So having that roommate-style living is where we see would be great. I want to jump here into the supporting details and I want to pull from the mission statement, actually, from the City of Douglasville Community Development Department. Want to emphasize on the continue to foster smart and innovative growth in the community. That's what the city has mentioned the development team is going to do. And this is exactly where it falls in line. Lastly, in, on this slide here, I want to go down to the Douglasville Housing Assessment, page sixty-three, which was written twenty-twenty-one, and it was discussing how many bedrooms we are short. So in two bedrooms, we are two hundred and sixty to eight hundred and eighty short. In conclusion, also pulled from the Douglasville Housing Assessment that was written, we discussed about the missing middle housing. And the missing middle housing includes the duplexes, the four units, the triplexes, and that's where this project lies. The Douglasville Housing Assessment also shows that we have plenty of large family homes, single families, but we're missing that missing middle. And then lastly, just here, the community vision. The community vision, I want to emphasize on that last, number three right there where it says, rezone and add zoning categories that allow for smaller residential lots to improve the mix of housing options. This is, I guess, considered smaller because it's not meeting that two, two acre. But in the community vision, we've mentioned that we want to rezone and add zoning categories to allow for some of the smaller residential lots. And so I'm asking you to do that today. I want to say thank you very much, especially to the development team. We've spent multiple ti, um, a good bit of time working on this and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Are there questions of the applicant? Ms. Jones? Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Brandon.
Wow, I'm so proud of you. You did well. Thank you. And so let me just make the record straight. This is in my ward, okay? So I just want to say I'm very proud of you because it's going to take individuals such as yourself along with the community and your council members to blend and bring up the area and certain areas in this community. So this is to get rid of the house that that looks like that now is going to be awesome. So I'm real proud of you and I hope that, you know, if this passes, that this will not be your your last journey of improving the area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, again, I want to thank you for our conversation and I've been down and taken a look at it and I really appreciate what you're about ready to do. And welcome to the north side again. You know where I'm located. Thanks.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you again, Ms. Jones. You're not at Red Velvet?
No, no. My time ended there. Got to work on this project.
Oh, okay. Well, it's good to see you. And I had a question for staff or for, I don't know, I'm not certain. I know this would have to, is, would this be a variance since it's not two acres and one point nine?
I just sent the message over to our chairman. I think the applicant is aware that her request actually does not meet the requirements of the UDO. One of the things, and this is to the applicant, I appreciate you coming forward. I think sometimes citizens may not necessarily be aware that the UDO is actually law. So there are specifications around variances and how they can be applied. What I would, you know, what I would suggest to the chairman and to the elected officials after they are done asking their questions, if we could work with the applicant to look for a zoning that would be appropriate for the property that she has. Because what is being requested is not allowed per your ordinance, nor is she eligible for a variance. So in order for you all to, if you take action on this, you're actually violating your own law. And there's not a path to move forward for her. But we would like to work with her to achieve something that can work with what she has. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Madam City Manager, and I did not look, I don't look at my text normally that often during the meeting because you all have me too busy. Also, there would be a possibility, possibly, I would assume, to maybe add property to this piece of property in order to enlarge it by that one-tenth of an acre. I don't know if you've tried that. I don't know if you've looked at that. But I do admire your your attempts to make it work. My question would be, all other things being equal, if there were two acres here, which obviously there's not, so we need to, we got to make a decision on that. But are all of the other requirements as far as the size of the units, the sewer availability? You're going from one home on sewer to four capacity as far as sewer is available? Or is all of that in line?
So yes, your development team reviewed the product that she provided and there were no comments or issues provided with the development that she shared.
Okay. Before we go forward, let's see if there's any other questions. We understand that Madam City Manager and and Ms. Reed have informed us of the dilemma that we have. And so maybe we can find a way to work with, to see an improvement in that community, as you have mentioned, Dr. Brandon, and get rid of something that is rather unsightly and not being of any use. Other questions or comments?
Just one question. Have you had conversation with Reverend Brown at Second Baptist?
I have, yes.
Okay. We'll just talk later.
I just have a quick comment. So when I did read the ordinances, unfortunately, all besides, I believe, R four, R five call for two acres.
Okay. Then it seems as though we're limited, we limit ourselves much more as to what we're able to do then. Let's go ahead and continue our public hearing because we have advertised for it and give anyone else that may have, would like to speak concerning it either for or against, then we'll complete the public hearing. Thank you very much. Anyone here that would come to speak tonight? Yes, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record and speak on whether you would be in favor of or against this item, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Tracy Roberts and I live at one-two-six-seven Winford Colony Southwest in Marietta. And first, I just want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, and distinguished council members for allowing me to speak. I know this is part of the process, but I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous, but anyway. So also, I want to let you know, today is my birthday, actually.
Happy birthday.
I'm serious. Thank you. But I'm just saying that, and thank you. But just to let you know that I'm actually not out celebrating my birthday. I'm here speaking to you and so that hopefully says something. I wanted to be here with you because I am actually the owner of this property on Elsie Street. So I thought you'd like to hear how this came to be as you consider this rezoning request. And I confess, I don't understand all the complexities about the variances and the UDO and all that. So I know that's an issue to be worked out. But so here's what happened. I bought this property because I've known Sheraton Jones for several years and I believe in what she's doing. And every day we hear about how we need more housing, not just in Douglasville, but everywhere. I mean, we hear about that all in the news everywhere. And here she is with a great plan and she's wanting to do something about this issue to, with the derelict property, which is bringing the neighborhood down. It's right down the street from her and you can see from her eloquent presentation how buttoned up she is and how much she cares and how much work she's already done. So I know you already know that. But so when she first told me about this, she found the owners, she found out they wanted to sell. She got to work figuring out plans, which you've seen. She got, figured out her construction loan. But the loan product required that it be rezoned at the time of purchase. And so that's where the wrinkle came in, but the previous owners didn't want to wait for the lengthy process of doing the rezoning. So that's where, that's when I came on the scene. I'm not a wealthy person, I promise you that. I was actually a professional ballet dancer in my early years. So I'm, I'm like a starving artist originally for my career. So anyway, I found a way to buy it last year to give Sheraton the time to go through this lengthy rezoning process. And then when this is done, she's going to buy it back for me and then she's going to continue on hopefully with her plans. So I just think also, maybe some of you know this from knowing the neighborhood. I think that was mentioned, that, you know, this property has actually changed hands several times since it burned years ago. And each time, it seems like the owner just held it and then they were waiting to resell it again a few years later to make, make a little money on it and doing nothing really to improve it, just leaving it a derelict property there, burned-down house. And so it's just continued to bring the neighborhood down and I could see that. But, you know, I could be one of those people too. Like people are calling me, people are sending me letters saying, hey, we want to buy this property on Elsie Street in Douglasville. And I'm sure they're probably going to just do the same thing, just hold it and then wait for it to appreciate and then try to resell it again. So but, you know, that's just continuing a downward spiral. But Sheraton and I are not going to let that happen. We are trying to break that cycle and she's going to create some beautiful new housing and turn this property around. That is our hope. So that's why I'm here, just to show my support and to give you some background on this property, which I think is probably a little unusual. I mean, we are just like two women. We're not big companies or anything. So I just hope you'll come together and find a way, be creative and find a way to support this rezoning to whatever number it needs to be to work it out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have thirty-five seconds. Is there anyone else that would like to speak concerning this item, either for or against? Seeing none, then we will close that portion of the public hearing. And I'm assuming then that we will, between now and Monday, we will reach out to the applicant, have staff talk with them and see what will be the best course of action to go forward on that, at that time, okay? Thank you all. Item G. Hold a public hearing. Gee, imagine that. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from PUD Plan Unit Development District to PUD Plan Unit Development District, eleven point seven seven acres, located seventy-one twenty-five West Strickland Street, Land Lot one ninety-three, District Two, Section Five, Parcel Zero One Nine Three O Two Five A zero zero four. Application by Casey Hart and Sean Bennett. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. As mentioned, this is a request for rezoning at West Strickland Street. The applicants, Casey Hart and Sean Bennett, are requesting to develop a ninety-one-unit townhome community. They're requesting rezon the eleven point seventy-seven acres from PUD with their required country club construction to PUD without a required country club construction. Sorry, got tongue tied. So with that, this is the structure. As you can see, this is a venue that has been used before over a few years. That structure is still there and will remain as this development is taking place to the corners and rear of it. And the applicant will explain more about the usage of that after the rezoning, if granted. Currently, the property is on PUD. The surrounding parcels are PUD, R three and GC. GC, of course, is General Commercial. And they have a traditional residential future land use. And this does in fact, does in fact meet that requirement for future land use. With that, staff is recommending four conditions should you approve these particular requests. That would be stagger front housing for the townhomes of three feet, provide a turnaround area at a dead end, provide the turnaround at the end of each dead end. And then all those townhome units to be protected by sprinklers. And then at the westbound, exiting the site, to have a right-turning deceleration lane to be installed. Staff created these conditions with partnership of the Fire Marshal. And with that, staff is recommending approval to allow for these conditions to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, sir.
The applicant, please come forward. If you're present here, we'd love to hear from you. We'll set the timer to get started. Give us your name and address for the record. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Good evening. My name is Michelle McCauley. I work with Gas Ons La Crawl. We're located at thirty-four seventy-five Corporate Way in Duluth, Georgia. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight. As Shayla mentioned, we are here tonight requesting a rezoning for the subject property from PUD to PUD for the purpose of concept plan approval for the development of single ones, ninety-one single-family townhomes and the use of the existing historic home for office. In addition to the rezoning requests, my clients are requesting to remove the special use permit for our country club that was approved back in two thousand and five. Here is an aerial image of the property. It is eleven point seven seven acres, as mentioned, on West Strickland Street. It is currently developed with an event center in the existing historic home. The property is just west of the downtown district and is in the immediate vicinity of several subdivisions, including Blair and Braylon Manor to the rear, Ashley Falls to the west and Rosewood to the south. As Shayla mentioned, here is the zoning for the piece of property. It's currently zoned PUD, as with the adjoining apartments, R three to the rear, GC to the front and the R two and CSC. Also, as mentioned by Ms. Reed, this is the future land use. We are, the property is shown as traditional neighborhood future land use, which encourages smaller residential lots. Here is the historic home on the property. It's known as Rosely Manor. The intent is to maintain this historic home. It will be donated to Share House. A representative was available during the Planning Commission meeting to speak to their future use of the property. Unfortunately, due to illness, they were not able to be here tonight to explain, occupy this building. If this property is rezoned, it will be donated to them and then they will operate it for board meetings and things of that nature. And I'll show that more clearly on our site plan as we go to the next slide. So here is the site plan that we're showing. This shows the townhomes in gray. This is ninety-one single-family townhomes in a density of ten units to acre. The blue is the stormwater facility and the roads, which are not allowed to be included in the calculation of this PUD. Open space is shown in green. We meet the thirty percent requirement for the density bonus. And in yellow, this is the property that's going to be donated to the Share House. So here is the existing home now and there is the existing driveway. There will be a new driveway added for the townhomes here, just to the east of the site. This represents just over one acre in donation to the Share House, which is a nonprofit. Staff has recommended approval of our project with four conditions. As mentioned earlier, it is our position that our concept plan that is shown meets all of these conditions and we accept them and ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. Question. The property to, on the left front quadrant, is that, that is the area that is the family cemetery? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Has it been removed from the plot?
It was not a part of the property.
Was never a part of the property.
I think the city actually owns that cemetery.
I wanted to make sure that that was, that had been taken into consideration.
Correct.
Okay. I'll open the floor, starting with Coach Watts for questions.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I was curious, the, it's ninety-one units.
That's correct, ninety-one units.
Are they, are, will these be like for sale or rented?
For sale townhomes.
For sale townhomes.
Single-family attached product.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Portman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clarification, the cemetery, is it the area on this map that's shown in green?
No, it's right here.
Gray.
The gray adjacent, sort of jagged property that's up against it.
There's an existing property here and then that cemetery, I believe, sits right here and is owned, as I believe it's owned by the city. It was donated to the city.
My question is, why didn't you just simply bring that street all the way down to Strickland? Why is it dead end that way?
Well, really, two reasons. The primary reason is for open space. In order to get the density that is required to make the project feasible, we have to have thirty percent open space. And so we're not able to count this donation piece, so that's the reason for that. And also, as much as possible to try to protect that view shed from West Strickland. It's a beautiful entrance. So by doing this allows, so this will be, this will all be an amenity to these homeowners. There is an amenity here as part of the community, but this is envisioned to be sort of a park-like setting for those future residents. So that, this is all amenity for the community and then the Share House will be something separate. There will be fencing here to sort of separate that use.
I guess I appreciate the explanation, but you're still have, it's an amenity that's surrounded by ninety townhouses.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, but it meets the intent of, you know, providing for open space and having a density bonus, which is in your code.
You can't include the Share House donation as part of that thirty percent, is that what you're saying?
Correct. That is not.
So what is your percentage right now based on what you've got there?
What's our open space percentage? It's right there, thirty point five.
I can't read, it's too small on ours.
Right here. Small numbers. I looked it up, I did the math.
It's pixelated on ours, so we can't read it.
Three point, three point five nine acres of the eleven point seven eight is open space.
What was that again?
Three point five nine.
Out of eleven?
Eleven point seven eight acres is our open space. Thirty point five percent.
Thirty?
Thirty point five.
So you're just, you're just right at it?
What?
You're just right at it, is that what you're saying?
We are just at it, correct.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? One question that I had, I'm assuming then that all of the green space would be placed into the control of homeowners associations? Would it be maintained by homeowners association?
Yes, it will be a mandatory homeowners association and they will own the open space.
Okay. Okay. Sir, yes, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Yes, thanks again. That's, that's in, that's, that's on the New Horizon District, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I like the fact that they're saving the old Huffin house. You and I know whose house that used to be.
That's correct.
And he actually donated to the Share House?
That's correct.
Are they excited?
Oh, yeah, they're super excited about it and they, I apologize that they weren't able to be here tonight. They made a presentation and spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, yes.
I'm a request for them to come in and tell me how excited they are.
Will they plan on being here on Monday night?
It was a part of the public record from the Planning Commission meeting, but yeah, I'm sorry.
Will they plan on being here on Monday or are you aware?
We will make sure that, I mean, if it's possible, we will.
Sure.
Yes. They were supposed to be here tonight.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
I'm not finished, not yet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis. I'm just trying to run against the clock here. You don't realize how long we've been.
The clock, let it run, let it tick.
Go ahead.
Let it tick. This is going on New Horizon. Would this, will all this be gated?
These streets will not be gated, no. This will be a public street.
Okay. All right, so we'll throw a little paint and a little, little fix it up for the, for the donated house too, right? Can we put a little paint on it and spruce it up?
I can't speak to the future builder or developer, whether that'll be part of their agreement. There will be a development agreement between the two entities, but that's not been drafted yet.
Okay, good. That's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, being a public hearing, we do need to give opportunity for anyone that would like to speak either for or against the project. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. Anyone? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. We'll close that portion of the public hearing. If there are no other comments or questions, we'll move on to the next time.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brandon.
I stepped out for a moment. I do apologize. So these are again in Ward three. Thank you so much. So these are townhomes?
Yes, that's correct.
For sale?
For sale townhomes, yes.
Okay, for sale. So hopefully, we can talk to you too about a great community garden, things of that nature in our ward or just to help with the economic development, not ask you to do anything extra, extra, but just there are apartments.
To the east?
To the east, right. So these will be for sale, which is interesting. And I won't make any comments in regards to the Share House, but thank you for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
One more time then, anyone else? Thank you very much. We will take this up on Monday. Last item. Item H. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from GC General Commercial to Light Industrial District for point five one acres located on Veterans Memorial Highway, Land Lot eight twenty-four, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Zero Eight Two Four One Eight Two O O Two Eight and Zero Eight Two Four One Eight Two O O Two Nine. Application by Brandon Development Company, care of Arthur Brandon. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Made it to the ninth hour, we're ready. Okay, so the Brandon Development is requesting to have an industrial warehouse development. You may recall, they have come before you in the last few months to have the same zoning in the same. before you in the last few months, to have the same zoning and the same zoning classification. There were some things that council asked of them in regards to how the building will be situated, as well as how it will protect the residential structures. So they are purchasing this property to ensure that those things that were asked will be provided for this site. With that being said, the development, I've touched that, the development, this is the current site, so they are purchasing to further the development that they have, as mentioned on Veterans Memorial Highway. The zoning is general commercial and light industrial in the nearby parcels. As you, we have not changed our zoning map yet, but that larger parcel that you're seeing is the industrial piece that we have changed recently. So the parcel does have an industrial piece that will abut it. We do have a mixed-use design for the future land use, and as you see here with LI, LI is in allowed use for the mixed-use design. These are the same conditions that we requested for the last development, and we're asking for this to be the same for this site, to make it, I guess, partner with how the development will be outlined once developed. Of course, we're asking for the fifty-foot natural buffer to be placed, and we're asking for there to be natural buffers, and then the width between there to be fifty feet or greater, to allow for an opaque visual scene, or screen, I'm sorry, asking for a natural buffer as well for such vegetation, as mentioned, with evergreen shrubs. So with that being said, that will give the protection that we're looking for for the surrounding residential parcels. With that, staff recommended approval, and so does your planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Come forward, sir. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Name and address for the record, please, sir. I assume you're Mr. Brannon?
I am Mr. Arthur Brannon, twenty-three forty-one DeForest Ferry Road in Atlanta, Georgia. And we were here a few months ago, and we were able to get the rezoning for the light industrial. And some of the comments we received at that time from city council were to make the building appear really nice along the street, want a great appearance. We also had received concern from you about, I guess, screening the truck area. So this half acre kind of gives us enough room to rotate the site. So this, this is the original proposed building without the, it's here. And if you look at it, you know, the front of the building is over here. We were going to do the nice side, and we were going to screen this truck port. We had two entrances, and we had a fifty-foot buffer back here. But by buying the half acre, we could rotate the building and take it over this way, have one entrance, have the truck port in the back, and have a bigger green space in the back, and then we have a more attractive front of the building. So we also wanted to get that half acre, because we have to tie in the sewer that's over there. So that was the first thought we had, and we still have other easements we're still working on. But we got that half acre, we could rotate the building. And I'm not sure this is going to be the final building layout. We're still talking about the depth. It may not be as deep as this building, but at least we're going to have frontage long, Veterans Memorial Parkway, with truck ports in the back. We have a bigger green space down here. So it really just improved everything, all the concerns that city council had. So I think this is going to be a bit positive for our development.
Thank you, Mr. Brannon. You also are removing, then, that half acre, I believe, at present houses an aged, not operating, small car wash. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So you're removing that and including it in your development plan?
Sorry.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? I think we've worn you down. You've gotten mighty quiet.
It's an improvement. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct, Madam. Any questions, any comments?
What was, yeah, what was the drop-off from this, this Veterans Memorial down to the?
Yeah, there is a drop-off going to the back, and that kind of lent itself also to having the building face veterans, because the four-foot dock would be, I guess, parallel with veterans, who will work better with the grades that fall from veterans to the back.
What is the drop from, what's the drop from the, the street down to your lot?
I think it's around...
Looks like twenty feet, maybe twenty-two feet.
Maybe twenty-five feet.
If you look on page thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
It will give you a topo.
Okay. Oh, there it is, yeah.
So having the dock there, that kind of works with the grades better, too. That helped us.
And your building height is, what is that, probably about the same, right?
Do you recall, Mr. Brannon, the building height overall?
We were going to raise the front of the building, I think, to screen the air conditioning units, so you wouldn't be able to see any air conditioning units. I want to say it's about thirty-eight, forty feet.
Okay.
Would be the height. But because it sits down from the road.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's only going to be slightly higher than the road.
To the top of it.
High enough where they can't see the AC.
Yeah, you're going to have to go a little higher to screen your air conditioners, just to get them out of the view shed. Okay.
Any other comments, Madam Mayor, or any of the council? Yes, Coach Watts?
I was just wondering, will this project require a holding pond for runoff?
It does, and it's...
It's in the back.
I was looking at it. I, I thought I, I saw it, but I wasn't sure.
Page thirty-three.
Stayed in the same place.
Yes, yes.
You just have more green space around it than we had on previous area. It was further back. You can see this line here, we're quite, you know, we're a lot further, maybe double the distance from, you know, it's not just the fifty-foot buffer, but we now have a big green space in addition to the buffer.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any other questions? It being a public hearing, once again, we, we seem to be running out of people. But is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, then we will close that portion of the public hearing. Mr. Brannon, we appreciate your patience and your hanging there with us, and we will take this up on Monday night.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that is all that we have tonight under planning and development. Thank you very much.
Ooh, wee. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. You did an excellent job. I think we're gonna, I was gonna take a recess, but I'll let Mr. Chairman take a recess for community development, so we can push through. Okay, heads are nodding. Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item that, are we going to discuss this? Is that how we're handling it? So, okay. Wasn't sure. Okay. And to authorize the mayor to sign a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power Company for lighting upgrades at six-six-nine-five Church, four-nine East Strickland, Strickland, and eight-three-three-seven Dallas Highway. Mr. Greg Roberts, do you want to come talk to us about this?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. This item is on the agenda, but I realized earlier today that there's some misinformation that was provided, that, and I'll take the blame for it, having not realized that there was some miscommunication between myself and Georgia Power. So I'll try to come back with something on this, if not next round, maybe later in the month of March. But I've kind of got to back up and punt on the thing a little bit, and we'll come back and talk to you about it.
Madam Mayor, did you have a question about this before you?
No, sir. I mean, no, ma'am, I didn't. Mr. Roberts, you just want, no, take no action for now.
That's all. We'll just pull that up to the, to the bill there Monday night.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we have this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair of Public Improvement and Beautification. We'll move on to Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Sam Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, I have a one item, and I'm gonna start with item A. Hold a public hearing to consider the application for the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package selling wine and malt beverage and spirit liquor at the following establishment. Proposed licensee Jay Jalorm of Douglasville LLC, DBA Scavvy Bottle Shop, located eight-hundred Maxim Road, Suite C. Proposed agent outlet manager, RB Patel, required fees has been paid into the finance department. Mr. Patel, will you please come down? State your name and your...
Good evening. My name is
Good evening.
RB Patel. My address is four-seventy Manor Oak Lane, Marietta, Georgia, three double oh six seven. I'm here tonight to request an approval for the application that has been made for retail package store located at eight-hundred Maxim Road, Suite C, Lithia Springs.
Mr. Patel, I remember when you came in here probably about two or three years ago, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's already built and ready?
Well, I came here last year for this.
Okay. I remember when he came, Madam Mayor, remember when he came with his plane?
Uh, two, three years ago, I came for a Cave Springs package.
Oh, good. So you're ready. I, when it came up, I took a ride over on Scavvy, and I, I took a look.
Yes, sir.
I said, man, you got a masterpiece over there.
Yes, sir. It's ready, ready to go.
But you have about five different businesses going to be in there?
Uh, it's going to be a total of four businesses, all.
And they're going to be?
Including the package store.
And they're going to be professional businesses?
Exactly. I've, I've got several applications, but I'm just trying to consider more of franchises.
Like subway or either pizza?
Just taking my time to choose the right tenant.
I really appreciate that. I think that was one of the questions that Ms. Miller had.
Last time we came here, yes.
Good. Okay. Mayor and Council. Madam Mayor, first.
No, sir, I don't have anything. Welcome back. And you were going to have, like, a medical facility or something?
Correct. Somebody is looking into that as well, for the adult care.
Okay, for adult care. Okay. Thank you. I remember. Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I tell you, we, we have to ride by and take a look at it.
Yes, sir. Anytime.
It's beautiful. I see you got your sand already up.
Yep.
And hopefully, get you a subway or some major.
I hope so.
Maybe a Garfauza pizza. Okay, let's go and try a public hearing. You're going to have five minutes for those who speak, speak against your application, and five minutes for those who speak for your application. Right now, we'll take all the, if speak against, come on down. See no takers? All those who speak for, come on down. Like I see no takers, we're going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Patel, come back up, and I tell you, thank you again for that beautiful strip mall. It's beautiful.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
And, and we'll let you know on Monday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you again. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Patel. We'll move on, then, to the next committee, is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight. Item A is appoint Christian Malina, digital media designer as the City of Douglasville's representative, to strip a one-year term on the Board of Directors of the Cultural Arts Council of Douglasville slash Douglas County, expiring March first two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Watts. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Mr. Christian Malina serves as the City Digital Media Designer. This role for the Board of Directors for Cultural Arts Council is usually placed or served with one of our employees at the City of Douglasville. It was previously, previously held by Ms. Haley Chapman, who was the digital media designer as well. She did leave the city about a year ago, so Mr. Christian has been there for about eight months. He used to serve on the CAC just as a volunteer for their board, so he's very excited. He's became acclimated with the City of Douglasville, so he's very excited to start volunteering and serve on the Board of Directors on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions, comments? Okay. Well, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda, if that'd be all right, for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Chattahoochee Riverlands project. Mr. Bass is going to present.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Christopher Ass, eighty-eight-thirty Gurley Road. The Trust for Public Land is seeking a letter of support to apply for the Ray's Grant, which is a federal-funded grant that would provide financial support up to six million dollars to work on the component of the Chattahoochee Riverlands project that goes through the City of Atlanta, Douglas County, Douglasville, Chattahoochee Hills, and South Fulton. Mr. Walt Ray from the Trust for Public Land will be here at committee's meeting on Monday to give more details about the overall project and how it impacts the letter of support is what they need to apply for the grant. That's due next week.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Any questions or comments on this? Mayor, and then we'll go to Mayor Proton after that.
Thank you. I will just say to Mr. Bass that I'm familiar with this project. It was brought to Community Resources Committee, which I serve on ARC. So it looks like it's going to be a great project if we're able to get the resources.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you. This with the river keepers, Chattahoochee River Keepers as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go ahead, Rep. Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If anybody hasn't had a chance to look at that map that's part of your supplement, and you get an idea of the extent of this project, I mean, it is pretty remarkable. And this is, from my understanding, only a part of what the long-range plan is, which is, I think, eventually what a Helen to Columbus Trail.
Columbus Trail.
Which is, you know, on par with the Silver Comet. And that's a phenomenal game changer for the, for this corridor, in terms of parkland, in terms of access. People have never had that much along the river before, but it's, it's a remarkable project, and it's going to be quite an asset to the, to the region and to this community.
I just hope by the time it's finished, I'm, I'm still able to walk on it or ride on it, but it looks like it'll be, it's a, it's going to be a process. But thank you for that presentation. Anybody else have any questions or comments about this project? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bass. And we're going to place this on the consent agenda, if that's all right with council. Madam Mayor, that's all I've got.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Bass. We appreciate that, and Ms. Jackson as well. And Mr. Christian is, he does a great job as well in the graphics department. We'll move on to Technology Committee chaired by Mayor Proton, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Technology Committee, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign an offer letter with Fusis Inc. for software services and hardware to provide a platform for law enforcement security camera viewing purposes. And we have Mr. Sam Jenkins and Dr. Chief Gary Sparks to help us understand this.
All right. Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. Sam Jenkins, six-six-nine-five Church Street, Douglasville. And we've got our nice chief over there. But what this software here, it features software, so this is the new way, pretty much, where law technologies, a lot of other agencies and things that are using this, did the technology with the camera system to pretty much be able to, like, track users, and also to be able to, like, do artificial atten- intelligence. So they, for instance, search it for, like, a, a, a red car, a, a female with a green blouse. They'd like set the parameters up. So this would, this would pretty much give them, not only that, this would, it would give all the officer access to the cameras on their phones, and also in their, in, in their car, their mobile laptops as well. Some other features this right here offers, it will integrate with cameras with all of our systems, but it also work with other systems as well, like FLOPS. So we'll be able to integrate FLOPS system. We will also be able to reach out to the community. So if the community is open to, like, join this system, we can, like, provide them with appliance, or have them purchase an appliance that where the PD would be able to pretty much have access to local business and things as well, the mall. I'm sorry, Chief's alive, he wants to speak. But this right here, pretty much, is a new way of pretty much fighting crime, with putting eyes up in the sky for the law enforcement to be able to know what's going on.
Yeah, this is a force multiplier for law enforcement technology, especially with the town green coming in, and we see all these townhomes, and the growth is going on in the city of Douglasville. This camera system, this fusis, is, is just what it does, is take all your cameras, the cameras from the park, our FLOPS cameras, the cameras on the town green. It takes all your cameras and fuse them your cameras and fuse them together. But we will be able to watch these cameras real time if we, you know, when we develop a real-time crime center. It also enables the civilian, private sector and business, they can come and be a part of a registry. So if some crime happened or something occur, we can look on the registry, see if they're part of the registry, then we can, they can allow us to get that footage. You know, and since we had these Flock cameras, I tell you, it's so many violent criminals that we have arrested here in Douglasville. They didn't commit no crime here in Douglasville, but they just hit a Flock camera in Douglasville. You know, so I think that's one good thing about this Fusis Center. We just went to Georgia Tech last week and looked at their camera system and next week, I think we're going to Atlanta and look at there. Now, what Atlanta does, as Sam was talking about, these boxes, you know, it's like six hundred dollars safe funds if you go to a housing area and you want to put their cameras on and get them these boxes. Well, Atlanta used their foundation money. They took money out of the Atlanta Police Department Foundation and purchased these boxes for these citizens in these communities, which give them a lot more, several more cameras. That's why you see when you see a crime occurring in Atlanta, they got, they got the footage because they got cameras everywhere, you know. So this is, you know, this is one thing we want to start looking at and, you know, we see a lot of crime happening, not so much in Douglasville. But we can see the wave, we can envision the wave of crimes happening at our gas stations. You know, some cities require that the gas station have cameras and they hook up to the Fusis Center. So when we have a crime, we have a starting point where we can go bring these people to justice. So right now, I think we have forty-six Flock cameras, looking at ten more, so we're looking at maybe fifty-six Flock, fifty-six Flock cameras, and I think Sam had like three hundred.
Yep, we have three hundred and twenty cameras throughout the city with additional coming for Town Green. We have like thirty-plus coming for Town Green. So total here in the city, we got a total of like near four hundred cameras already.
Right. And what we want, what would be vital, is vital is when you get to Town Green, you want cameras all up and down the street, the side streets, front street. You know, we got a plan for that now. So it's just a good system. And then like Sam stated, you know, you have thirty or forty other PDs and we can, we can gain information from their camera systems.
Okay.
So...
Sam, does this have facial recognition software?
Well, a lot of camera system don't pretty much advertise facial recognition because they still got to go upstairs to the fade and things like that. But this does have some artificial intelligent way you can pretty much, and pretty much lock in on people and pretty much trace them on different cameras. So for instance, if someone is on a church street and we lock in on that person right there and they go over to another street, that same person can pretty much shows, can pretty much be identified. Same thing with vehicles.
Yeah. You have a concert or something down there at Town Green and somebody is just doing something crazy and you could put that data into the system, so Town Green concert is over with, but you have something up here on the corner up here at the plaza, something, you have something, and you know, we looking for this person. So we could put that data in and that camera system will track them. Same thing we do with Flock. If we get a vehicle that commit an armed robbery, say for instance, and we got a type of vehicle, we can, we can search, we can put it on the Flock, it'll check, it will check vehicles in East Point.
So you can assume a direction that they're heading.
Right, right. So it'll start pulling up vehicles, a black vehicle, two doors, it'll start pulling them up until we, and then we have to sit there and look at it and find our vehicle.
And not only that, with this right here, it's a network of cameras, what it basically is that interruptible. So with other cities and things like that, like Flock, it pretty much can be shared with other cities and things like that that are using it. But also, we're not locked in with like just one vendor with this camera system right here. So whoever can have whatever type of camera they choose, it's all pretty much bred through these appliances and things, so they pretty much all work together.
Any questions from the mayor or council or comments?
Real fast, real fast about Flock. And Chief, I'll just talk with you later to see how we can, I don't know, you said Atlanta used their foundation to help get those cameras at the homes. You know, I've been talking about that for about three, four years because, you know, Mayor Lightfoot in Chicago, Mayor Bowser in DC, giving those cameras to the citizens and they would pay a portion, but they all connected to the police department.
Yeah, well, we just got our 501(c) and that's something I'll be talking with the city manager on and we could move forward. But, you know, Atlanta been doing this for millions of dollars in their foundation.
I understand.
So, yeah, they can go and buy those, I guess I call them blocks.
Yes.
And they can just, they can outfit a whole community.
Mm-hmm. We're going, we're going to work it out. But that's all I have. Thank you. It's a great idea.
Any other questions, comments?
Great innovation.
Coach, you want to say something?
I just, I just, I like it when criminals show up thinking they're outsmarting us, looking for a place to hide. We run up on them every time. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Coach. Any others? Sam, at what point does this guy not become self-aware and then we need to start worrying?
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about that, how pretty much, pretty much started taking over, right?
But you know, I would say, you know, we just, we just watched the incident in Memphis. You just watched the incident in Memphis, those guys didn't even know they had cameras. You see?
You said something at the police town hall the other day. I learned something very interesting about the body cameras that I did not know, which was that they're activated by the siren on the car.
Right, yes.
I thought that was pretty fascinating. That was really, so that's how, if anybody didn't know that already, that's how you don't have to worry about the officer remembering to turn them on. Anyway, thank you, Sam. Appreciate that. If there's any objection, we'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. It's like we're consented. Thank you very much, Sam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have under technology.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton and Mr. Jenkins and Dr. Sparks and Chief Sparks. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight? We got two minutes before we turn to a pumpkin.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to say one comment. I want to compliment our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Chris Bass, for doing an excellent presentation at the Arbor Station HOA meeting on Tuesday discussing, he took some very tough questions about the addition of parks in Ward One and handled them very, very well, very diplomatically, very professionally, and hats off to you. Thank you very much for that presentation. And Chief Sparks was there as well, did a great job. There's so many questions for Chris, unfortunately, Chief didn't have as much time to a presentation. But thanks to both of you for coming out to the meeting. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Proton. We always give our staff kudos. I know the only couple of things that I was thinking about was the Unity Day the chief is going to have on Saturday. It's the second annual Unity, second or third annual Unity Day at ten o'clock. And we have a recycling visit that the council has been giving us some information about.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make, have a shout out for staff, all the staff I look at here, and the crowd has dwindled and all we have left is staff for the long day they've put in. Appreciate y'all and thank you, Richard, for being here also.
Any other, any other business to come before council tonight from council members?
What about us? We stuck here.
I know. I'm fascinated today with all this. Okay, we'll move on then to updates from city staff. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
I have no business this evening, but I do have an update on Mr. Dodson. He is ready to come back, but it'll be a little while. But he sends his regards.
Thank you so much. Send ours back to him, wishing him well. Our Chief of Police, Chief Sparks.
You mentioned that, Madam Mayor, we have our Unity, our third annual Unity meeting Saturday from ten to eleven-thirty. So we have light refreshments, come out and support the community by being, showing you that we're unified as one.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief Sparks. Our city manager, bring it up.
I tried to make certain you all didn't have too long days, but we do have committees on Monday, so you'll have a long Monday.
It's a Monday, President's Day. How we have a meeting on President's Day?
We have always had a meeting on President's Day, yes, ma'am.
It's a national holiday, that's all I had.
Okay. Any other?
Eighties.
Oh, Lord. Any other business? It's nine o'clock on the dot. Not hearing anything else. This meeting is adjourned.